Good evening. I'd like to call this session of the Town Council meeting order at 7:06. If you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Life Scout Andrew Johnson will be leading us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The Merrimack Town Council would like to extend our condolences to the family and friends of Jim Pitts, who passed away on September 23rd. Jim served as the Assistant Town Manager for Merrimack, as well as a City Manager, Town Manager, and Town Administrator for Impelham, Franklin, and Bowe, New Hampshire, totaling 22 years. Jim was a Vietnam Veteran and served in the United States Army for 20 years. Full Military Honors are being scheduled for the New Hampshire State Cemetery. And if you wouldn't mind, join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Upcoming council meetings are scheduled for Thursday, October 27th, Thursday, November 3rd, and Thursday, November 17th, all at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Meeting Room. That was good timing.
Great timing. Got to catch my breath. Absentee ballots for the general election are now available at the Town Corps' office. See the town website for official forms and information. Please join the town of Merrimack's Fire Department for a day of fun and education at their open house on Saturday, October 15th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Events include apparatus tours, displays, equipment demos, a midnight alarm, obstacle course for the kids. The open house will be held at Station 1, which is located at 432 Daniel Webster Highway. The town of Merrimack is sponsoring a Senior Information Fair after a two-year hiatus with many organizations offering information to our senior citizens about their services and to answer questions. This year, we will have the New Hampshire Mobile COVID Clinic available to provide vaccines and boosters. The Senior Information Fair will be held on Wednesday, October 26th, from 9:00 AM to noon at John O'Leary Adult Community Center located at 4 Church Street. This is not to be confused with the Senior Citizen Craft Fair, which is happening on October 22nd at the John O'Leary Center. Yes, they are. In partnership with EverSource, Merrimack residents can recycle their refrigerators, freezers, air conditioners, and dehumidifiers this Saturday at the transportation at no cost. The $15 per unit cost will be waived and paid by New Hampshire Saves incentive programs. An EverSource employee will be onsite to discuss rebate opportunities for all new appliances. The final Household Hazardous Waste Day will be Saturday, November 5th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 25 Crown Street in Nashua. See the Solid Waste website for more details. The town, uh, the library is, well, has been collaborating with the Moose Mountain Seed Saving Group based in Milton, New Hampshire, to create a new seed-sharing collection. Participants will be able to take seeds from this collection to plant in their home gardens. Learn more about this endeavor on October 19th at 6:30 at our Seed Saving Presentation at the library. Thanks to the members of the Merrimack Garden Club and UNH Extension Master Gardener Education Program for their assistance in bringing these services to Merrimack. On September 14th, 2022, NRPC Transportation Technology Advisory Committee, TTAC, met on 16 projects that were presented to get New Hampshire DOT 2223 to 2032 10-year plan. The 16 projects totaled $40 million. There was only $7 million available. The town of Merrimack submitted two projects of the 16 projects that were reviewed. One was for the rehabilitation and safety improvements to Chamberlain Bridge over South Egan River at Daniel Webster next to the fire station. The other one was a presentation at the triangle at Camp Sergeant and Natticook Road totaling about $2.6 million. I'm happy to say that after the rankings, these two projects are number one and number two. Uh, actually, the, after additional rankings, the Natticook Road, Camp Sergeant, Triangle section ended up at number five. However, Chamberlain Bridge still ended up number one. So these are going into the TTAC plan and moving forward into the next step in the process. Congratulations to all that worked on that program. One last thing. The Public Works Department recently hosted two UNH T2 Square training seminars at our highway maintenance facility. Green Snow Pro certifications and chainsaw safety and maintenance. These classes are ongoing education and safety courses for our public workforces. I want to say everybody passed, and congratulations to all. We are now Green Snow Pro certified, and we do have several employees down there that are chainsaw certified, getting prepared for the winter months. Thank you.
I was just told that I, I apologize. If you'd like to address the council for public comment, you can do so at this mic right over here or at the table. We normally do this just for agenda items, but I know that there was an individual here. Shelley Usinski would like to speak, and I, instead of making her wait till the end, if you'd like, whichever you're comfortable with. Thanks, Andrew.
Oh, there it is. Okay. All right. Thank you. Let me start by thanking the board and especially Chairman Rothaus for allowing us time to speak to you before the start of your meeting. As I'm sure you are all aware, we are here as concerned Merrimack and Woodland Park citizens after we witnessed the horrific fire on Forest Drive on October 3rd in our neighborhood. We wanted to come before you, the Town Council, because you are our elected officials, and we feel it is important that you hear our concerns directly and not hearsay from any other sources. There were many of us homeowners who were outside witnessing the fire, and collectively we were shocked and horrified by what we saw. Many of us have lived in the neighborhood for well over 30 years, and that particular house has affectionately been called the King Cone House. That was the, the, the original owner of King Cone. That was where they lived. Of course, we were all very thankful to God and the Fire Department that the family that was living in the house was out safely and no one was injured. We are grateful to the Merrimack Fire Department for all their efforts. We believe they worked valiantly to make sure no one was left inside the house and also to attempt to put the fire out quickly. Several of us have since called the Fire Department, and we received callbacks in a very timely manner. The Fire Chief and his lieutenant have been very courteous, professional, and forthcoming with answers to our immediate questions. They have been open and very responsive to all of us who have contacted them, and for that, we are very thankful. We have been told that there will be an investigation and a report should be forthcoming from the Fire Department regarding this fire. We are also grateful to the Merrimack Police Department, especially Officer, we think his name is Tyler, and I don't know if it's a first name or a last name, but that's all we know. He was perhaps in charge of the crowd control, and he was very polite and respectful to all of the residents in the neighborhood. There was probably 40 or 50 of us out on Forest Drive where we were, and we know there was another group on the opposite side of the house on, I think it's Woodland. So, yeah, the police, he made sure we were not in any danger, and he did his job professionally and courteously. I'm sure he is a shining star in our police department. And as I'm sure you have heard, the fire hydrant that was directly across the street from the house that was on fire failed. It did not work. The firemen were unable to get water from it. We have been told by the Fire Chief that it was an experienced Merrimack fireman who tried to operate the failed hydrant the night of the fire. It wasn't just a rookie. The hydrant failure was very distressing, not only obviously to the homeowner, but to all of us who live in, in our neighborhood. The Fire Department had to drop a hose all the way down Forest Drive and across Joppa Road to get water. They also had to drop a hose down Woodland Drive at the corner of Hartwood Drive. All of this took valuable time away from actually putting the fire out. We believe the fire that was started in the garage perhaps could have been contained in the garage if the hydrant right in front of the house had worked properly and the firemen had the water they needed. Sadly, the house is a total loss to the homeowners. Our neighborhood, which was built in the 60s, thus making our development, well, close to 60 years old now, is out of current municipal code regarding the placement and distance between the hydrants. It is our understanding that the current code for distance between hydrants is 500 feet. The hydrants that did work the night of the fire, hydrant number 110, on the corner of Hartwood Drive and Woodland Drive, is 950 feet measured to the hydrant closest to the fire. The hydrant number 107, that's on Joppa Road, across from Forest Drive, is 905 feet from the hydrant closest to the fire. And Fernwood Drive, which is right off of Forest Drive, has no hydrants at all. There may be other streets as well within Woodland Park that don't have hydrants. I, I just don't, I don't know if there are or not. Measurements taken from the closest hydrants are over 600 and 700 feet to the houses located in the middle of Fernwood Drive. And those distances include cutting across lawns and going around street corners. And that's assuming that those hydrants work. You can only imagine the degree of consternation for those who live on Fernwood Drive, and they're here tonight. We are also concerned about the underground infrastructure, including the water and drainage pipes underneath our roads. We have severe drainage problems on many of the streets and have been experiencing sinkholes. There are major cracks and potholes on all, all the streets, and we experience major flooding anytime it rains. The last time our streets were paved over, not replaced, paved over, was in 1989, which begs the question, could deteriorating underground infrastructure have contributed to the hydrant failure? So the other questions that we have regarding this whole incident are, who owns the hydrants? How old is the hydrant that failed? What is the manufacturer's life expectancy of a hydrant? How did the hydrant fail? Oh, did the hydrant fail because of deterioration underground? Who is responsible for replacing the hydrants? And are there any short or long-term plans to replace the hydrants in our neighborhood? How old is the underground water system in Woodland Park, and does it need to be replaced? And after 60-plus years, shouldn't our neighborhood be upgraded to the new municipal code of 500 feet between hydrants instead of the current 950 feet? Will the Fire Department's report be available to the public? Does the Water Commission answer to the Town Council? If so, could you request a detailed report from the Water Commission regarding Woodland Park's water system and the age and condition of our hydrants? Will the Water Commission provide us with the cause of the hydrant failure? And what assurances can you give to the citizens of Woodland Park that in the event of another fire situation, that the hydrants will work? And our last question is, will the Board of Selectmen or Council look into the infrastructure conditions of Woodland Park and propose a plan to repair or replace what is needed? Now, we understand that this is the first time you're hearing these questions, and we know that some of these questions can only be answered by the Water Commission or the Merrimack Village Water District. And we don't expect you to have the answers to any of these questions tonight. But when you're able to get answers to any of these questions, we just ask that you either contact Ben Niles or myself, and we can pass on your responses to the rest of our, our neighbors. And again, I want to thank the Chair, Finley, and the whole council for giving us the time to bring our concerns to you, our elected officials.
Thanks, Shelley.
Shelley, could you just, for the record, state your name and address for our minute taker who's not in the room?
Sure. It's Shelley, S-H-E-L-L-Y, last name Usinski, U-S-C-I-N-S-K-I. And I live at 3 Forest Drive in Merrimack.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The questions? Yeah, that'd be good. I, I didn't start scratching notes, and I wouldn't have been able to keep up anyhow.
Oh, no, no. I have a copy. I was going to give the copy to you.
I can touch on a couple of points that, that I recall. But first, I, I want you to be comfortable in the fact that when the Fire Department approached the fire that evening, they had written off the garage. It was fully involved. They knew nothing was going to be saved in the garage. So their first attack was in the home. So when they arrived, they bring, they brought, I want to say it was a 750-gallon tanker, and they, they, that immediately went into the house. And at that point, their protocol is to hook up the hydrant to that tanker and would continue on. They don't know what happened. They can't recreate the, uh, the situation. They've tried all different things that might have happened that evening, and the water works fine. There's plenty of water for both domestic and, and fire suppression needs. And so they don't know what happened. And I, they're still working on it, I believe, but the Fire Department is full of redundancy. So when, when that hydrant didn't work, they had a second tank come in. So there was a short pause without water at that moment. And then in the meantime, they're running down to the next hydrant, which is what the protocol would be, to connect. And so when that second tank ran out before they had fired up, charged it with the hydrant, they were short of water supply for another short time. And then they had brought in extinguishers to be dealing with it for the moment, and then the hydrant charged the tanker and everything was working normally. I had been told by the Chief that the outcome would not have been different if things worked perfectly and we had the first hydrant charged. He, he, he believes that that's the way it is. They're working, they're going through all those things right now, and anything that the, that the Fire Chief or the MVD puts together, I'll speak for the Fire Department, it will be public. You will know about that.
Okay. Do you know if they finished their report?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And then...
And their, and their report is specifically just what happened with the Fire Department only, right? They don't look into the hydrant itself or water systems or anything?
The MVD and the Fire Department were working on that together. As far as the hydrants go, the, your desire to put them at every 500 feet, that definitely would have to go before the Village District, because we have no say over that. And then the other issues, you have drainage, we're aware of those things. I don't, I, I haven't asked the Public Works Director, but I don't believe that those things had anything to do with the hydrant and the situations that was, were encountered that night. But I, but you're, but, but those, the, the Water Department issues have to be dealt with, with the Village District.
Do they, now, do they answer to the Water Commission?
Yeah, the Water Commissioners, there's five of them, they, they do their protocols, policies, and everything that goes on down there, their maintenance schedule, that hydrant was tested, I think it was in June or July.
June 2022.
And tested out good at that point. Excuse me. And so, you know, so that, that's, you know, those things, they, they apparently have a regular testing schedule. I don't know what the schedule is. They, they could tell you that quickly off the top of their head. And, but that, for those things, that's, you know, have to go to them for that.
Okay.
You did that. All right.
Now, does the Water Commission, are they a separate entity completely from you?
Yes.
So they don't answer to you at all?
No.
No? Okay. All right.
They're an independent municipal operation.
Okay.
It's similar to the school. The school's independent of the council.
All right. That's good to know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, your other questions related to failure rates, how long are they supposed to last? The district would have all that for you. Nancy had scribbled a few notes for me.
I wrote some notes.
Her writing is almost as bad as mine, so.
But all those questions related to hydrant, MVD would answer.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll leave this with you, Finley, then.
If you want to hand it to Paul, that'd be great, Shelley. I appreciate that.
And thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
No, absolutely. I'm glad you were able to come. Is there anybody further who would like to address the council? Someone just step here or to the mic?
Ben Niles, 11 Fernwood Drive. I would just like to add my thanks and appreciation to, for our Chief DeFranzio. I spoke with him at least three or four times. He was always accessible. If he was in a meeting, when he got out, he returned my phone call, and I just am very appreciative of the great job they did. I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much.
And if there's a report forthcoming that's public, we'll look forward to that. But I think fish we got to fry is when we meet with Merrimack Village District, because there's questions that we have that is not in your purview that they should be responsible for answering.
Yes.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Is anybody further who would like to address the council? Seeing none. All right. Thank you very much. Move on to, we have no resignations, recognitions, or retirements, no appointments, no public hearings, legislative updates from our state rep delegation.
I didn't get any.
Nothing? Nothing. That's a good point.
Town Manager Report.
Thank you. I would like to give a heads up to the Town Council and to the residents of Merrimack. It is tax rate setting season. However, tax rate settings have been put on hold. There is a class action lawsuit, I believe, out of Clermont on the education, state education funding, the way they have it. DRA was told to hold off. I got word late last night, early this morning, that DRA is now going ahead with setting some tax rates. So, but that pushes them back. Today's the 13th, it pushes them back almost two weeks from when they would have started. So tax rates are going to do their best to get us tax rates as soon as possible, but we might not have a tax rate to sometime in November, which means that they could be due around Christmas time or by the 31st. We, we try to get them due in the same calendar year so people can use them if they file a Schedule A on their Schedule A as well, or if they have rental or things of that sort. So we try to get them due by the 31st of December. I guess it's, police state tuned. And Tom, do you have anything else to add because you were on that GFOE conference this morning?
No, that's the same information that I have.
So that, that's where we stand with tax rates, but I want to let everybody know on tax rates. Thank you for your kind words about the Fire Department. It means a lot to me. They, they report to me and eventually up to the Town Council, and I'm, I'm glad that they have answered all your questions and been helping you out through that time over there. Finally, I'd like to talk a little bit about the COVID Mobile Clinic. Pat Murphy, as soon as they released that there's money for COVID shots and boosters, Pat Murphy was on the phone right away to get them at the, the Senior Fair. If you're interested, please contact Pat Murphy, and you can contact her at her office to schedule an appointment. So they're looking to do maybe around 20 an hour. So they will be there at the fair, but it's by appointment. So if you're interested in getting your COVID boosted at the Senior Fair, please contact Pat Murphy. She can be reached through her, her email, pmurphy@merrimacknh.gov to set up an appointment. In addition, I believe the Senior Fair, which has taken a hiatus for two years, is very informational. So if you know any seniors in town, it's a lot of information. It talks about rides, it talks about Meals on Wheels, it talks about services for, for the elderly, things of that sort. So it's not just a, a, oh, one done, but if you, if you do know any seniors, it's very informational for anybody who's a senior to come out and find out what services that are available to them in this community. So, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. No consent agenda, no old business, hunter new business. We have Nick LaValle here, who's going to speak to us about Community Media Day.
Nick makes his way to the mic. I just want to say that Nick brought this up to me earlier this summer about Community, Community Media Day, and I said this is a great way to recognize the media department as well as get the information out there so that people realize what actually our media department does. They just don't sit here up in, up in the second floor of the Town Hall and tape meetings all day. They do shows, they do live sports broadcasts, they've been, do Merrimack Minutes, Merrimack in Motion. There's a lot that they do, and they help out. They, they are always willing to go into classes and talk to kids and, and about media and television and Girl Scout, Boy Scout tours. I think this would be a great opportunity for the town. It's kind of like the open house that we talked about with the Fire Department on Saturday. Nick is planning on having an open house as well to, at a, at a Thursday night when no meetings are being scheduled, so people can actually see what his department and some of the equipment that is bought with the media funds on that cable franchise fee. Nick will give you more information about the, what this, what this, how this came about and his thoughts on it.
Well, Paul just basically said everything I was about to say, so, thanks, Paul. That's how, that's how well-versed he is in community media. So great to have a Town Manager who knows what community media is about, and that's, that's really what we want to do with Community Media Day. Community Media Day started in 2019 in Brooklyn, and it was an opportunity to be, to celebrate community media, access centers, nonprofit organizations, and it takes place during Free Speech Week. And I just saw this as an opportunity, especially the past few years, you know, we have been so heavy with covering municipal meetings and especially our sports and event coverage. I really see Community Media Day as a chance to celebrate those things, but also put a spotlight on our community channel programs. We have residents over the past 20 years who have submitted thousands of programs. There's two very prolific residents, two residents who are very prolific with submitting programs collectively, between these two people alone, they've, they've submitted over 700 programs on Merrimack TV's community channel. We also have a few folks who have done programs over the past three or four years, and they're well into almost 300 programs now. So we want to put a spotlight on the residents who produce programming while celebrating all things Merrimack. we wanna put a spotlight on the residents who produce programming while celebrating all things Merrimack, Town of Merrimack Media Division does, and all these resources that we have available to the community. Um, so what we plan to do, uh, is kick off kind of a Community Media Week, uh, Community Media Day, but start this Friday night at the football game. We're gonna have our play-by-play announcers talk about our resources and what's available to residents here during the course of the game. Uh, we've produced a few different segments that really shine a spotlight on these residents who have produced shows. They're great. I got a sneak peek at two of them today. Uh, I can't wait for folks to see them. And then, uh, we'll have those on our YouTube channel and obviously our channels throughout the course of the week. And then we'll wrap this up on Community Media Day next Thursday night from six-thirty to eight PM with that open house that the town manager just mentioned. And really, it's just a chance for anyone to come into our TV studio, take a look at our facilities, meet, uh, our staff, and perhaps some of our community channel stars will, will stop by as well. So that'd be great. So you have the proclamation in front of you and I hope you sign it and, uh, and I welcome everyone to celebrate Community Media Day with us next week. Thanks.
Thanks, Nick. It, it is an amazing group of people. Hard, hard work. It's, uh, I'm addicted to Merrimack TV now, so. But, um, um, I, uh, I do have a proclamation here and, uh, I will read it and then we'll move on it. Town of Merrimack Town Council proclamation, Community, Community Media Day. Whereas community media connects residents to their neighbors, community organizations, schools and local government, and whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy functioning of our community, and whereas the sharing of ideas and information helps to build understanding and values within a community, and whereas community media organizations provide a means for communities to tell their stories, hear each other's stories and create new stories together, and whereas community media organizations provide local information to the community that may not be covered by commercial media, and whereas community media organizations provide people with the resources necessary for the creation, sharing and consumption of knowledge and ideas through media, and whereas community media is an important resource for participating in local democracy, and whereas in many communities, people are not aware of the diverse and valuable programming on public education and government access channels or community radio channels, and whereas communities will benefit from increased general awareness of viewing audiences for and creators of media content created by and for the community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the town council of the Town of Merrimack hereby proclaim October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two as Community Media Day in Merrimack, and all people are hereby called upon to promote the importance of community media resources within the town's media division and programming available on Merrimack TV. Proclaim this thirteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-two by the Merrimack Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, second by Barbara. And, uh, no further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven-zero-zero. And, uh, thank you, Nicholas.
Thank you.
Paul will get this in the right place.
Should be good.
Absolutely. Alrighty. Finally, Andrew, we're here. Uh, item number two under new business, council to be presented with Boy Scout, Andrew Johnson's proposed Eagle Scout project to build a canoe slash kayak storage rack to the waterfront at Wasserman Park. Thanks for your patience.
I'm assuming this mic can't really pick me, pick up what I'm saying if I'm standing.
You can take that mic right over there if you would like.
Yeah, it's easier with this.
Is it easier right there?
I don't know. I, yeah.
Because if you, if you would like Andrew to take that one, you could feel free to do so.
I'll just stay.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, thank you for having me. My name is Andrew Johnson. I'm here from Troop Four-O-One, and I'm here today to talk to you guys about my boat rack building project for Wasserman Park. So let me just quickly talk about my troop. I currently work with Troop Four-O-One, which is based in St. James Church. Uh, the troop has around fifteen people in it. I've been the troop for around six years, meaning I'm one of the more experienced boys of the troop and like leads the troop on events. And I have lived in Merrimack my entire life, so I think of this project as a way to give back to Merrimack in a way, uh, for, for like living here and stuff, yeah. Um, the purpose of the project is to give people in Merrimack a place to put their canoes or kayaks in a place that is next to the water, allowing for easy use of their boat. Now, if the project was to be built, it has two primary benefits. One, it gives Wasserman Park another source of revenue, since I was talking with Matthew, the head of the park and rec, and he said those spots would be, uh, rented out to citizens of Merrimack. And two, uh, according to math as well, Matthew as well, um, a lot of people in Merrimack are actually requesting for something like this to be built. So if it was to be built, it would make the people of Merrimack more happy, which is always important. Uh, location. So like I said, this is a bad image, but, uh, like I said, uh, the project would be built in Wasserman Park. Uh, if you see in the bottom left there, that is where the waterfront is. And if you know where the old canoe rack is, it's going, the new one's gonna be built like right next to the existing one, roughly in that blue circled area. This is a better image of it from the ground. You have the wire from the background, the old canoe rack in front of that, and then this nice open area would be where the new canoe rack will be built. So, building process. So the new canoe rack would basically just be an improved version of the existing canoe rack that is already there. So this is a frontal version, uh, view of the canoe rack and this is a side view of it. So if you're wondering what the new canoe rack would like generally be like shaped like and would look like, think of like what you're seeing in these pictures, adjust with some improvements, which I will talk about now. So instead of being able to only hold six boats, this new one would be able to hold nine. Now, all that I have to do to make that possible is by moving the pillars that are holding up the canoe rack from instead of two feet apart to four feet apart, allowing for use of the center of the rack. Uh, wood will be placed on the sides of the canoe rack to act as railings, prevent boats from falling off. And the wood pieces, the wood pieces will be run from one end of the canoe rack to the other in the center to act as guides for the boats being placed in the center. That's helpful if you want to actually put boats through the center there without them falling down. Um, and the wooden pillars that are holding up the structure will be cemented thirty inches down. Now, this is opposed to the previous canoe rack, which was not cemented into the ground. So in terms of making a structure that will last for a long time, uh, this new one would last a lot longer. Uh, and final thing is a locking mechanism would be installed to allow users to lock their boats down. Now, I find this very important since if you're opening it to the public, they're gonna want some peace of mind that someone can't just walk by, take the boat and go. So a locking mechanism, mechanism in my mind would encourage the use of those spots. So this is what the CAD, uh, drawings of the project would look like. Uh, hard, kinda hard to see on that, but. Um, the picture on the left is a front view of it. The green pieces are the twelve-foot-long main wooden pieces that are holding up the canoes. The pink pieces are the main pillars of the canoe rack, holding up the structure. And the blue is where they'll be cemented to the ground. Uh, on the right there, you can see what I mean by the railings. Those are the brown pieces. Those can be on the sides of the canoe rack. Now, when I go to actually make the canoe rack, I have a lot of different options, like for locking mechanisms. This is just an example of what one would look like. I like this one in particular since you can, you can screw it into the canoe rack, meaning if someone want to remove the locking mechanism, they would have to have a screwdriver on them. And people can like run a chain through this to be able to lock their boat down. Now, to dig the holes that cement will be poured in, I would greatly appreciate if the town would be able to use an auger to easily dig for thirty-inch deep holes. I was told by Matt that this was a possibility and it would be very helpful since like my troop could come in and hand dig the holes. And but that would take a lot more time and it would be, I would greatly appreciate it if the town were able to use an auger. Um, I will, I would pre-mark the locations of where the holes would need to be dug, how big they would have to be. And I'd be down there or one of my troopers would be down there to make sure they're being dug in the correct spot. And I would contact someone after I had scheduled, uh, to schedule the digging after the project is approved and the fundraiser is complete. Speaking of fundraisers. So keep in mind when I'm saying this, um, I'm going to do the project in spring due to the cold weather that's already coming in and uh, I have like, it'd probably take another month to get it approved by other Boy Scout committees before I could actually start working. So I don't think it's very reasonable to do a car wash, um, which the, the, uh, okay. Uh, yeah, I would, I'll be doing a car wash to obtain the revenue for the project. Uh, I'm doing a car wash because my troop does a lot of, uh, fundraisers and car washes are the most successful, uh, statistically from all the ones we've done. And the project is going to cost around six hundred and ninety dollars. The car wash would happen at St. James Church. The scouts of my troop will be the ones that like help with the fundraiser. And once again, Matthew told me this was a possibility. The town advertising event on social media platforms would be very helpful, uh, because more people end up knowing about it, of course. Uh, and I just want to say this, the town would not be paying anything for the materials of the project. That would be handled by me. Uh, thank you for listening. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Andrew. That was a great presentation. Um, do we have an auger? I don't even know if we do.
I was told you did.
Yes, we, we do. It's on the, uh, back of one of our apparatuses. I believe it's on the back of our cabota. We have the auger, right? Yeah. So we do have it on the, we can, we can handle it. If he marks them out, we can do it. We got it.
All right. Um, now, I think this is a great, uh, project. I never contemplated a revenue source. I, I just would, uh, wanna make sure the boats would be secure so that the town didn't have to worry about something there, but, uh.
That's in Matt's presentation when we do the budget.
Okay, very good.
He gave you a heads up. See, he ruined the story this time, not me.
Does anybody have anything for Andrew?
So, Andy, what, what kind of finish do you expect on this?
It would be in the springtime. Uh, it, I, it, the, the project itself would take a weekend to actually build it. It's just all the logistics of getting the holes dri-, drilled and then just coming in and actually making, building it. It'd take a weekend to actually build. So it wouldn't, once I start, it would be very quick, but it would be in the spring.
Does this need any upkeep or any finish on it? It, do you need to paint it? Do you need to?
No.
How do you maintain the rack?
Uh, it's not gonna be painted. Uh, from what I heard from Matt, he wanted it to be basically the same as the old canoe rack, just with like the improvements I said. He didn't say that he wanted to be painted. And so that, I'm just doing what he was like, kinda telling me he wanted. So, and the old canoe rack doesn't, I, I believe doesn't have any upkeep. So no, there wouldn't, from my knowledge, there would not be any upkeep of the canoe rack.
Okay. And you, you, you plan to put rubber bumpers or something on it for the canoes or kayaks to sit on, or?
Yes, there would be mat, like the old one had mats that were placed down where the canoes were resting on. So I would do the same as that old one as well.
Okay. Thank you. My question doesn't have to do with the presentation, but, uh, what is the process of the town liability of those canoes or kayaks being taken out?
That is part of what we need to research further.
Ah, okay.
But there is a need to have them down there for camp and things of that sort, so.
I mean, maybe there's a disclaimer or a release. That if you're going to rent, they acknowledge that, you know, they can, it could be still, it will slow them down with what you're doing. I totally admit that.
But we, we still have to work with our insurance company to see what the risks are, evolve. But if they're not even, if they're not rented, there is still a use for kayaks because we have the camp and we have, we, we could use them.
Right. But if you're gonna rent.
If we're gonna rent, right. And that's why Matt is coming during budget season to discuss that possibility when we, when we talk to Parks and Rec.
Andy, else that? Barbara.
So getting back to councillor, um, Koenig's questions.
I've been there. I've been there.
Been a long day. Um, are you using pressure-treated wood?
Yes.
Okay, that's what he meant by the finishes.
Okay.
Uh, versus painting, so.
Yeah, and the, and the, the bolts are also gonna be like galvanized or stainless, yeah.
And what happens to the old rack? Is it still usable for a little while longer?
Yeah, for, I mean, I'm, I wasn't really exactly told, but I was just told to build a new one.
Yeah, right.
But from what I've, is, if I've seen it, it's still usable.
Good. Thank you.
You're talking about putting it beside that, not in place of it?
Yes, ne-, yeah, next to it, in the open area, ne-, near it.
You did a nice job presenting.
Yeah. Anything further?
I was just gonna say the same thing. You did a great job in your presentation and that's a, it's an awesome project for the town. A lot of people will get to enjoy that. So thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure with the council. Fine?
You need to be on.
There we go. Thank you, Finn. Oh, Andy. Uh, Andrew, I'm sorry I missed the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, meeting the other night because of council meeting precede, uh, superseded it. But I noticed in the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, minutes, that Parks and Rec recommends this, uh, I think it was eight zip. So I'm sure you made the same effective presentation to the Parks and Rec Committee that you made here tonight. You're very good at it, and I wish you well with the project.
Excellent. Andy?
Entertainer?
Yeah, I'll take a motion.
So I'd like to move to approve, uh, the proposed Eagle Scout project by scout Andrew Johnson to build a canoe kayak storage rack next to the waterfront par-, uh, waterfront at Wasserman Park.
Second.
Multiple seconds. Take Barbara's. Nancy, okay. Almost no need to take a vote now. We, so, uh, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven-zero-zero. Thank you, Andrew. And I don't know, do you need anything from Paul or?
Um, the one thing that I need, because like when I go in front of the Eagle Board, they want a email from the town saying that they approved, uh, the project. So I'm wondering if I could get that out.
Sure. Copy the minutes and a letter.
Just, uh, deal with, uh, either Becky Thompson in my office or Robin Smith with where you need me to send that email to, and we'll get it out to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda, item number three under new business. Council to consider recommended changes to the Town of Merrimack return check or electronic means policy. Senya, she is here.
So, yes.
She's in the back.
Senya Simpsons is the, uh, town treasurer. Uh, and she is coming before you to discuss, uh, formalize, I should say, a policy that's been in place for a minimum of eighteen years that I've been aware of.
It's never been adopted.
I don't ever, I can't find anywhere that it's been officially adopted by the town council. So she's here to present to you, uh, the policy and ask for your acceptance and adoption.
Isaac, how are you?
Touch the button again, see if it changes. There you go.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the return check policy.
Much closer.
Really?
So, um, this is, uh, just policy that we are currently using, um, with the return checks. The, um, and Diane Trippett worked on it with, um, Tom Boland about, um, maybe, so it's, it's the same for all departments. When the checks come in, the departments are notified of which checks were returned, the reason, um, a letter will go out to, um, the, uh, writer, check writer, uh, from either, uh, the accounts payable clerk, three in our department, or Brenda Dulong from the tax collectors department. Um, this one just is updated so that we are, all of the departments are on the same page. So, and once a month, um, we will get together and make sure all the departments know, um, who has been writing the, um, return checks.
Does anybody have any questions? Tom?
So, so Paul, I think you answered the first one. Is this a change or is this a brand-new policy?
This is actually just formalizing a policy that we've been using. There's an RSA that we're allowed to charge twenty-five dollars for return checks, and we've been doing that, um, to collect them. We have put in writing, this policy has been put in writing. Now, what happens if we do not get a response by, um, by a person who writes a bad check? The police department will get involved because- The police department will get involved because it is a misdemeanor, or actually, I believe it's felony, to write bad checks, and they'll get involved. And usually when they knock on somebody's door, the uh person runs right down to make good on, on their offer. Um, it lays out um what happens if they're, they have done this in several different departments or several different bad checks, that it's a policy that we will only accept either a cashier's check or cash from them going forward um for, for um, for the issue, the services. So this is actually, we've been recommended by our auditors as well as our, some of our, our uh insurance to get this out and make it public and put it on our website so that people do know what the return check policy of the town is. So, long-winded answer to say, it's something that we've been doing, we're just officially putting it in writing and getting approval for.
So are you gonna add it to the administrative code?
We're not making it as an ordinance right now. We're just using it as a policy. Because if the RSA changes, uh, with the amount of money we can charge or things of that sort. Um, so right now, we're just looking at it as a policy, not an ordinance of the town.
Um, and so I can't ask when it was last updated. Under section uh three B I, it talks about the town manager may waive said fee upon consideration of a formal written request from the customer, which includes proper justification. I was wondering what proper means.
Uh, proper justification is um sometimes during tax season, people get very nervous and they'll send a check in to us. And then they're, they won't realize that they have uh the banks escrowing the money and they take it out of their account. So they duplicate pay for the same check. Proper justification would show that both checks came out of the account together and we cashed them. And we put the individual into a negative balance because we cashed both checks. And that would be proper justification, saying they didn't realize that my bank paid for you. Sometimes what happens is they'll send a check in, their husband will send a check in. This is, this happened once. The husband sends a check in, the wife sees that the tax that they're still due on the kiosk because it went to the lockbox. Lockbox processes it. She'll come in that same day, write us a check. And they both overpay their taxes and it'll bounce because of the, they don't have enough money to cover two tax payments. So that's the proper justification I'm looking for.
But do we charge them an overdraft fee in that kind of a case?
We, we would just.
They paid their tax.
We would just charge them what the bank charges me for the overdraft, and we would waive the, basically the twenty-five dollar administration fee.
Okay.
I get charged.
I would think proper is not the right word to put in there. I would say sufficient or, or find some other way to say that you can convince us that there's a, there's a good excuse.
Sufficient would work.
Would need a definition saying what does proper mean.
Justification.
You could just say justification, but.
We, we can make that change. We'll make that change, yeah.
How much does the bank charge us for an overdraft?
It depends. Um, the last, no, honestly, I, I've been out of finance for, for a year. Um, when I was there, it was like three dollars. I don't know if that's changed or not. I don't know.
I get charged forty bucks. What do you, I, I need a new bank.
Yeah, well, we, but we get charged the transaction fee. That's, that's it. Has that changed?
It's two dollars and fifty cents, so.
So it went down a little bit.
Round, rounding, rounding error.
Right, yeah, well, it was, yeah, so, but, but that's what the bank charges us. But there's also a lot of administration time that goes into it. We have to research what department it is. We have to send out the paperwork. We have to mail it out. That's why the state allows twenty-five dollars for return checks.
And on the next page, uh, under section four, it talks about if the return check was for motor vehicle registration, the town processes. The town also processes administrative complaint with the state. Does this happen right away or does it happen after the ten days of the person opportunity to come in and clear the check?
They, they, I can't speak for what they do over in uh, in um tax collector's office on this. Uh, but we can find that answer out. But I believe that it's uh, basically it puts the registration into suspension so that if they get pulled over by a state trooper.
They're hosed.
Well, yeah, well, they, the, it's a, it's, yes, because the car will be towed and or.
Until it's been reimbursed.
Until it's being reimbursed.
So while it's outstanding.
Well, there was some comment in, and I don't remember exactly where, but I thought they have fourteen days from the day that the town's noticed to make a full payment. But if the town clerk's office is gonna turn around and issue, and issue the statement right away, then that doesn't give them any time.
I will find out from the town clerk, tax collector, what they do with that and get to back to the council. I do not know.
And, and then I would suggest that we codify that in here. If it, if it doesn't wait the fourteen days, that we make sure it's clear that the policy says they're not gonna wait.
As soon as we get the return check, it goes into.
To the state, and then they're liable to get stopped and.
Right.
In a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
That one might happen immediately. It would be good to know.
Yes, I'll let the council know on that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you can approve it with the nuance, knowing that. Yeah.
I think because if it's a state requirement and on the registration, it could possibly be. Uh, because they, if it's not covered, they would, they could hold it to a different standard than us, waiting for two weeks as a courtesy to let you come clear it up. Might be two different things.
Right. I don't, I don't know because we are a one-check town. Meaning we accept both, we, the state and the town as one check. Whereas before it was two separate checks and the state would cash their own checks and deal with their bad checks. But that might have been a caveat that the state gave to us in case people wrote bad checks, to be a one-check. But I'll check that out and uh we'll clar- you know, we can clarify that whether or not it's after the fourteen days you'll be, your registration will be in abeyance or immediately upon receipt, it'll be in abeyance. We can add those few words, I believe, to the policy, and it's not gonna change really the guts of the policy itself.
Right.
So whatever motion is made should mention projected corrections to this section based upon.
Based upon our discussion.
Yeah, I think so. If, can I ask another question? On your sample form letter, it, it says that to reimburse the town for a related bank service charge of twenty-five dollars. But you just said the bank service charge is only two fifty, and it, and so maybe that wording isn't as accurate as it ought to be. Or just a return check fee of twenty-five dollars. And then, see, the last line says, and mail it to the following address. Does it have to be mailed? Can it be dropped off? Can it be, I mean, yes?
Yeah, the only thing we cannot, we don't, we, we do not accept ACH form of payment, but we accept everything else. You can walk in with cash.
If they come in with a certified check, they have to mail it to the Town of Merrimack.
Well, we can expand that letter to say you can come in, credit card, whatever.
Whatever. It just, it's fairly, fairly strict in what it's saying, and maybe it needs to just be a little.
Like I said, this hasn't been updated for a number of years, I believe.
Or in person.
Yeah.
Would it be easy enough to just do the fix and then vote on our next meeting?
You, whatever you want to, it's up to the council.
That'd be good, because you know.
I can bring it back to those businesses.
Absolutely spot on, and I, I could, I could see how we could do that, but it'd just be.
I can bring it back as old business at the next meeting.
We've been doing it for eighteen years without, so I think.
Oh, well, this letter probably is older than that. I think my predecessor wrote it. My, Barbara's predecessor.
So in a couple of places here, it talks about protest fees. What's a protest fee?
I'm gonna.
One of the places is on page two of the policy, number four, last two words, protest fees.
Plus any protester.
The policy.
I'm protesting.
Where is she, where are you? Right here at the very end.
Oh.
And it's also on page one, too.
IV, okay.
Another question to be answered.
Protest fees would be the twenty-five bucks.
Yes, exactly.
And that's in a couple of places, that wording.
Oh.
That's the twenty-five bucks. The protest fee is the twenty-five bucks.
So that should be defined in here somewhere.
Yeah, what a protest fee is.
Protest, the return check, well.
I think that'd be understood though. I mean, when you.
We didn't.
All right, I'm still, okay, all right.
I'm protesting. I want my twenty-five dollars.
All right.
I'm gonna defer to the person who wrote it and why you use the word protest.
Because I got this language from another town that has a formal written return check policy, and that's the wording that they used.
Oh, so set.
All right, we'll, we'll define protest.
We'll get it cleaned up for the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll get it cleaned up a little more for the next meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senya. Have we all said it then? We have?
I'm, I'm good.
Thanks.
Line.
Hey, a line, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of moving parts to this, and I guess we've added some moving parts. But the person who writes a check that gets returned, we're saying, okay, uh, something about fourteen days.
To make it good.
Given the vagaries of mail delivery and not having a clear understanding right now of whether or not the town clerk is bound to notify the state at the time the check gets.
That's what he has defined.
For lack of a better term. Uh, I, I think Tom is on the right track in terms of codifying something about the fourteen days in between page one of three and page two of, or, and, and the letter that goes out. What I'm saying is, people very innocent, you're gonna be arbitrating an awful lot of proper justification the way this thing is set up now. Just an old man pointing things out.
All right.
I need a table.
So table it till the date's earned or just?
Table till the, table till October twenty-seventh.
I'd like to table this to October twenty-seventh.
Very good. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Very good, seven zero zero. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senya.
Thanks, Senya.
Sorry.
She probably, she probably doesn't have to come back next time.
Unless she wants, unless she wants to.
All right.
She did a great job.
Yep.
So I hope she comes back.
Yeah.
But I read it this afternoon. I didn't have a chance to forward anything.
Item number four under new business, council to consider the recommendation to accept the town roads, open space parcel seven C slash zero four zero dash two, and drainage adjustments of Greenfield Farms fourteen subdivision plan.
So, and this is, uh.
Dawn is here.
Dawn's here. Dawn's walking up. She's gonna explain what's going on.
She looks like she's afraid.
She's running, she's running too.
She knows.
If she thinks if she takes her time, you will finish the presentation for her.
Not on this one, not on this one. This, this is a, a function of the town council when uh roads are, are finished. Um, they, and subdivisions are finished, they need to come before the town council and get approved. Dawn's here to speak to it.
I love these computers.
I'll get there. Mr. Lamontaine is here with me tonight, and he's the owner of this project. This is known as Greenfield Farms fourteen. It is located up at the Bedford Town Line between Wire Road and Pearson Road. Just to give you an idea of where we're at, talking. The overall parcel um was a hundred and forty acres, somewhere in that neighborhood. And it's the Blue Warrior originally. And a lot of the land went into conservation. He's got three different open space lots. There is a road that will go through, or does go through, sorry, between Wire Road and Whispering Pines. It's called Orchard Drive. And it's twenty-two hundred feet long. And as you can see, there are six little cul-de-sacs coming off of that. And they're all trees over there.
Apple.
Maple trees, yes. And we will also be getting this lot, uh, seven C dash forty dash two, which is up here off of Pearson Road, um, which we've been before you with Matt. I was in here with Matt before, and he's proposing to put some ball fields up in that, up in that one. This is, this is the lot. Um, and tonight we actually get to, if you accept it, take it over. It's part of this project. So tonight we're before you. Um, we have been working, the plan was done in uh, signed at in two thousand seventeen in December. Construction began in eighteen. And we've been working on it since. I've been out constantly checking the roads, being a thorn in his side. Um, making sure everything was done to our standards, so. Uh, it was done in several phases, and all of the phases needed to be completed before we came before you tonight for final acceptance. So we're here. There's one deed for all of the roads. There is one deed for this lot, C, uh, seven C dash forty dash two. And in the process of doing this, we ended up changing one of the drainage adjustments that were on the original plan. So we've had to do an expanded drainage adjustment, which is this area that's in green. Some of that area was already done, um, but we've redone that. Um, this is the lot that's up in Pearson Road that there, we'd like to be able to put some ball fields in. This is what we were talking about. This is the area up in here that um we added to the drainage adjustment. So this is the full drainage adjustment at this point. I have a new Mylar that will need to be recorded in the registry along with the deeds. Um, the other part of this, so Public Works recommends accepting of these roads. It's twenty-two hundred feet for Orchard Drive that goes through one end to the other, and another twenty-two hundred and seventy feet for all of the little cul-de-sacs. Uh, we did an original bond amounts, which came up to three point three million dollars. And then we reduced the bond a couple of times over, so right now there's a bond still in place for one point two million. What we would like to also have you do at the same time is to release that bond and to hold a maintenance bond for two more years for the total of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. We have been before the town uh planning board, and they have agreed to um the acceptance and also for the bonds to be changed out at this point. And that's, and the other thing I would like, um, if you do recommend, is to have the town manager to be able to sign the three various deeds. Questions, comments, concerns?
Does that make these accepted roads as of tonight, or is it in two weeks when the maintenance bond is finished up?
Right now, we have a bond still in place, and we won't release that till we get the maintenance bond.
Yep, no, but the, the roads are now, are they tonight being accepted by the town?
Yes.
Okay, not two years from now?
No. Tonight, and we start plowing them.
Yep.
Since of this year.
So doesn't the planning board do the acceptance? Not the town council of the bond?
They did do the recommendation, but you do the ultimate, uh, the final.
I don't recall ever doing that as the town council before. I've been on the planning board and taking care of a lot of bonds in the past on the planning board, but not in the town council that I recall.
Why is it different then?
They did approve it.
They, they approved the reduction to the maintenance bond.
Maintenance bond.
Which is all I've ever heard them do. That's why I'm a little surprised to see it coming here. But I don't have any problem with accepting the roads if you're telling me that they meet town standards and we're prepared and ready to take over maintenance and uh plowing and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I, I think uh the planning board has the authority to say that they need the additional three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. They, they approve that. I think the council just, once the council accepts the roads, that goes into play with, with it. Because they already voted. I don't, I don't recall when you voted.
On October.
I know you seconded it, Barbara, so, yeah. So, but yeah, I think at that, and now it's in front of you, you're gonna accept the roads, you're gonna accept this lot. Um, you're accepting the plans with the expanded dra- uh drainage area. And once those get accepted, the planning board already approved the maintenance bond.
Okay, so it is consistent.
All right.
So it is consistent then. It's not a change. So it is consistent then, it's not a change? I was suspicious if you're saying it's changed, then I would have concern. Why is it different than the normal? But what they're saying is it's not. Am I correct? It is consistent policy?
So we're not, are we actually voting on the bond then? Or, no, we're not, we're just voting to accept the roads.
Accept the roads, just town roads.
So it is.
Because. Sorry. Planning board on the consent that the road acceptance upon release request for the roads located. So they already released it, there's three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars left.
Okay.
I just didn't want to develop a new policy. Not even realizing it, thank you.
All right, does anybody, anything further for Dawn or Mr. Lamontaine?
And obviously, the fire department dynamic problem with the cul-de-sacs, lengths of distances, or any of that kind of stuff, or the planning board hopefully wouldn't have approved it in the first place. And hydrants and all that kind of stuff, are they out there, or?
Everything's out there.
Thank you.
Even the stop signs with the beaded.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Even the stop sign, stop bars with the beads.
Andy?
On the, the one lot, I guess it would be northeast corner. You said they've been here before, that was probably before my time. Is there some history on that, on why that's being turned over to the town?
As part of the project, they get, we're gonna give it to the town. Our, our pump station is in the very north.
That little white square.
North corner. And they were gonna give it to the town as part of the development. If they got the homes that they got, the number of homes they got, that was part of the agreement that was done. What Dawn's talking about is, is Mac Asperius has been talking about potentially putting a soccer field, one or two soccer fields in there. And that's really part of it, the, the discussion is how many additional fields can we get in that little area? But that was all part of the agreement with the planning board when Mr. Lamontaine brought the original fourteen project forward.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara?
Do I need to abstain because it's a different question technically than what was brought before the planning board?
No. Nope. Yep, I think you're good. Yeah.
That's a, excuse me, that's a big chunk of wetland right through the middle of the property? So there's only two pieces, two halves? No, of, or of seven C forty dash two.
There's the.
There's the Housick Brook. And if you look at, if you go back to your blow-up, right through the center of that, from left to right, upper left to lower right, that's all wetland.
It's a wetland, yes.
So we can't just use the whole piece of property without going through wetland permits and?
Correct, and that's what the plans show. That's what we did for the concepts, we showed that.
All right, thank you.
So I do have the, did make a copy of the planning board requirements under that section. Five point zero one point one, release of performance and maintenance bond. So upon recommendation of the director of public works, the planning board shall act to approve or disapprove the release of said performance or maintenance bond. Such release shall, such request shall release or release shall be reviewed by the planning board within forty-five days of the submission to the public works director. So it is just the public works and planning board.
Right.
They're the ones that do that. And then upon completion of the requirements of this section, the board shall recommend acceptance of said roadways or dedication land to the board as selectmen, so.
So we're accepting the roads?
Mm-hmm.
Based on?
And, and the dedicated land. That's your job. Okay, sorry, my, my.
No problem, just wanted to understand.
I just lumped it all together, 'cause I wanted to make sure I covered all the bases.
And you did.
Oh, good.
Plus a little bit.
Page two of the council, Andy, yes?
Move to accept Orchard Drive, which is twenty-two hundred foot of road between Wire Road and Whispering Pines, to also accept the six dead-end cul-de-sac streets coming off Orchard Drive totaling another two thousand two hundred and seventy feet, to accept all associated slope drainage easements, along with open space parcel seven C dash four zero dash two, and authorize the town manager to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
By Andy, second by Nancy. Any further discussion on your motion? Lon? No further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. Thanks, Dawn, and thank you, Mr. Lamontaine.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number five hundred new business, the council to consider the request to withdraw up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the road infrastructure capital reserve fund for the purpose of completing one existing emergency drainage repair, estimated in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and future emergency projects as they arise. Dawn?
So I just wanna preclude Dawn's presentation, is that times have changed with contractors, with buying automobiles. We used to be able, municipalities used to be able to say, okay, we're going out to bid. All right, thank you for your bid, it's gonna be good for thirty days. And we can get in front of the council and ask them to withdraw the funds from capital reserves. In the last three or four months, we have had, the last meeting, we had Waste Water come about a Blazer, not a Blazer, but an Explorer. And they were holding the bid for like ten days, and that was it. If we didn't accept it then, or got postponed, they were, they were selling it. A lot of our bidders would say to us, you got twenty-four hours to make the decision on vehicles, because I already have four other buyers wanting that. Same is happening with our contractors. They're bidding it, saying you got X number of days to do it, or else we're moving on to another project, and we not, might not get back to you for months at a time. And some of these emergency repairs, like we have had about on Nata Creek Road, and now on, on this road, we can't wait six months to get them fixed. Because we're putting steel plates in the road, or, or their, their sinkholes or things of that sort. So Dawn has, has come forward in trying to figure out, okay, on these emergency things, let's ask for a little bit more money, since it's already been in the CIP approved for, for drainage. Let's ask for a little bit more money than the twenty-five that we need, so that if this does arise again in that area, we can just go ahead and move and do these emergency repairs that we have to do. And that's why we're coming forward with, with, with the request to withdraw additional money than just a hundred, than just twenty-five, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. With that being said, I'm gonna pass the presentation off to Dawn so she can explain the drainage.
This current drainage issue is on Dahl Road. And what we would, the area that it's concerned is down here in front of twenty-three, at the corner twenty-three and twenty-one, Dahl Road. We need to replace the drainage line that's going across the road between the culverts, because that's what the truck, that's what failed. And when it failed, it also damaged the catch basin that was on the, whatever it is, north side of the road. So this is a picture of the catch basin, it's in very sad shape. And here's the steel plate covering the hole in the road, so. This is why we're before you tonight, and I, I sent out the bids, I sent out for three. I got one back. I had somebody working down the road at the Gale Road project. They were ready to come up and do it immediately, but I didn't have the monies. And they're all done Gale Road, so they moved out. And I would have been able to get it probably for a little bit cheaper if we'd have been able to use them, because they were right there. They wouldn't have to have mobilized again, so.
So in an emergency, what stops us from moving forward? I mean, there's no funding in the town budget.
There's no funding for this in the town budget, and that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to, because it's capital reserve fund.
Drainage or, I mean, literally no funding for road repairs? For emergency, right?
There isn't, Kyle, there isn't much.
Yeah, we have.
Thank you.
There's two sources we could use for that. We have ten thousand in our drainage fund, which is in the highway budget. That's for the whole year, that obviously wouldn't cover something like this. If it were a true emergency and we had to act immediately, like if it was on Daniel Webster Highway or something more critical than this, we could utilize the eighty-five oh five infrastructure fund, which is our paving money. But we could use it for that if we needed to. But for drainage specific money and really using everything for the purpose that we've stated in our budget presentations, it's the capital reserve funds. And I would add, this was never an issue until DRA changed the rules on the capital reserve funds, where, you know, two years ago or prior, it was approved through the budget process by the voters. You guys first, through your recommendation of the budget, and then the voters, I guess, confirmed that. And with the change in process that was made two or three years ago, now every withdrawal from the reserve funds has to come specifically again to the council. And that's what ties our hands in these emergency repairs.
I have a problem with that. It seems to me like we have a huge budget that we're able to manipulate and pay for things. And if you're convinced that this is an emergency and needs repair, you ought to go ahead and repair it. If you can't pay an employee at the end of the year because you overran your budget, and the town council refuses to move money in those budget line items, then, then that's a problem that needs to be dealt with, with the town council. But I, I sort of feel offended that, that we feel like we can't move at all unless the council makes some special motion to, to pull money out in an emergency situation like this, where you actually could have saved the town money if you just were convinced it was serious and the town council would go along. I, I'm just a little shocked that, that we just don't feel like we can't do anything. And then instead, we have to take a hundred thousand dollars out of that account and put it somewhere, and, and then use it when we want to, presumably come back to the council and explain later that it's been done. So don't get me wrong, I'm not mistrusting anybody, but I've seen a lot of articles go through the paper over the past few years about this auditor, or this finance person, or this somebody else stole twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand from the town. And we're responsible for all that money in this town. And to just, we keep giving away our responsibility, and I'm a little concerned about that. I have no problem with taking money out to make this repair. I have no problem with, with your, what you're doing or saying or anything like that. And I don't mistrust or doubt anybody here. But that's what they always say, when somebody suddenly has been caught with their hand in the till pulling money out. Well, we trusted them. And so I'm, I'm a little leery to, to go forward with that. That's just me speaking, and the council can decide what they want to do, but I'm concerned.
Lon?
Yeah, I don't have the, the exact same concern, but what precipitates a call to a, an outside contractor for this type of repair? Just looking at your picture, it doesn't seem to me to be that complicated. Can't DPW do some of that? That's my first question.
In this particular case, there's a water line that runs right beside it. There's electric lines, there's water lines that run right beside this, there's electric lines right there. And this is eight feet deep, this is quite deep, this is not your average catch basin.
That answers that question, so. Does highway do any minor repairs on its own?
Yes.
Which is part of, I think we're.
Yeah, that there's some budget to do repair work.
Okay.
Andy? Has y'all said long? Sorry about that.
I'll listen a while longer.
Yeah, I guess at first, I, I, initially, I shared Tom's concern about approving money without a specific purpose and just leaving it sit there. And then listening to Kyle's explanation, I thought to myself, well, I'm kind of glad someone's not out there fudging the budgets and saying, well, we could probably stretch this budget, the scope of this budget, and use it for this project, and then go to the council later and, and tell them we, we used it. They know the budget's there, and it's defined in a certain way. This is stormwater budget, it, it wasn't part of, of another budget. And they didn't try to use another budget to cover this repair, even though it would have probably saved the town some money, probably saved some time, it would have been easier, and then just come to us after the fact. So I guess, you know, on one hand, we say we don't want to approve money just to have it sit there. But on the other hand, I do appreciate that the town employees say this is the purpose of this budget, and I'm not using it for anything else. And, and so you can't quite have it both ways. And, and after I heard Kyle's explanation on that, that's, at least for me, I guess I would be more comfortable approving the funds, knowing that they're using it for a specific purpose, than to know that they're out there using other funds that are budgeted for another reason and shifting them over without the council's oversight. So that's kind of where I stand.
Barbara?
So once the money is moved, if it's approved, where's, where does it live? I mean, you have an immediate need now, but I'm thinking about future. If this is going to be something that happens regularly, where will the money live, so from an accounting standpoint, it's not just sitting in a multipurpose fund? Can we put it in a special line item fund so that we can actually track when it was used and when it went out?
Yes, it will, because it's a capital reserve fund. We have a special account in every budget for capital reserves. And Tom, the finance director, and Zeng, Zeng Simpson, who you met, track those expenditures. And we'll track this. And knowing that in this eighty-nine ten account, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for drainage, twenty-five's coming out for this project, we have a hundred thousand dollars left. And we track it, and that's why we, we do. So they, they track it, because when we go in for a request for trustee of trust funds, we have to prove of what we spent it on.
I'm actually, I'm with Tom, I'm like minds with him on this issue, because I was a little concerned. But I, for tonight, I can, I can make it work for the reasons he threw out, but I think that we should probably have a budget line for something like that then. Because I'm always, I'm always concerned of, you know, because I trust everybody, I'm with you, I get it. But I'm always concerned what people are thinking when we do give up those controls that we would have as council. So I'm, I'm not adamantly opposed to doing that tonight, but I really think we should have a segment in the budget that we use for that emergency purpose. Also, I really just, you know, Gale Road was a project that went for a little while, and I, unless this popped up at the very end, I mean, get me together for another meeting unless people would just be dead opposed to that. But I think, you know, that's also something we could do. I'd rather save the money so they don't have to bring equipment back, you know, a month later.
Honestly, on a twenty-five thousand dollar job, if this was a two hundred and fifty thousand job, thousand dollar, yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar job, the savings would have been significant. I don't believe that on a twenty-five thousand dollar job, we're saving a lot of money by mobilization, because there isn't a lot of money in the mobilization. Now granted, understood, we are shepherds of, of stewards of taxpayer money, and this is taxpayer money, so any dollars we can save, we should try to save. But it isn't, I don't want people out there thinking that we blew fifteen thousand dollars on, on this project because they were down the road.
Right.
We didn't. If, if, between, I'd say, my personal experience, between probably twenty-five hundred and maybe five thousand dollars at most for mobilization on a twenty-five thousand dollar job.
And that's probably right.
Yeah, so it isn't, it isn't like we blew hundreds of. Yeah, so it isn't, it isn't like we blew hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's, in this case, yes, we did. It's twenty-five hundred dollars we could have saved on this job. But it's partially on me, I should have brought it forward sooner. But I don't believe we knew about this until after the last meeting.
Yeah, it wasn't.
You know, I don't, when did we found out? I don't know, we found out about it, but I believe it was right around after the last meeting or right in that timeframe.
Less than two weeks, I think.
Would it alleviate concern if we time bound this to the budget season? And said, you know, we'll authorize this withdrawal. And it's only good until budget season and then a budget season, we can address it with a line item in the budget that gives the town employees the flexibility to go off and be able to handle something like this?
For me, I'm willing to let it, to do it tonight. I'm really voting in the affirmative on this, but I would like it as a budget.
And I can bring, and I can bring back a budget line item in the budget. I can increase our drainage so that we do have some money in there. But that ten thousand dollars that we do have in there is basically for Lori to replace, you know, manhole covers and, you know, couple of bricks around and some cement work around some of the drains. It isn't for projects where we have to get a contractor in to do it. But I can add, I can add a line item in the budget. I'm okay with that. And I just want you to know that this hundred thousand dollars, if we don't spend it, lapses as of July first. And it lapses, it lapses. It isn't one hundred thousand forever. It's a hundred thousand from now until July first. And once July first hits, if we don't spend it, any money we don't spend goes back as unappropriated. It goes back as unappropriated, falls off, and it goes back.
So it's no longer in the CIP or any?
It's no longer appropriated for these projects, so to speak. It goes, it's an accounting term that it gets unappropriated and basically is available in the capital reserve fund to spend.
Stays in the fund.
Stays in the fund, one hundred percent stays in the fund.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, is it stay in the capital reserve fund?
Yes, stays in the CRF.
He did go roundabout way. He went a roundabout way.
Yes, it stays in the capital reserve fund, yes, sorry.
But will be available if needed.
But be available if needed.
Okay.
I too had concerns, has been already verbalized, but at the same time, I think we have to recognize that times change. And we have to be able to accommodate with safety measures to take care of those concerns that we have. But there are policies we have to start changing a little bit. Because there are circumstances that you've already mentioned with the truck or whatever it is we got. And this, and there are going to be other items as well that are, they're changing. And we're just going to have to find a way to securely, safely, and maintain the integrity of the role of this council while doing it. So all of those issues, I think we've addressed, but I think it's going to happen more and more.
Lon.
What? What is the negative part of understanding each other tonight about some of our concerns? Withdrawing the twenty-five thousand to pay the bill and straightening the budget? Budget season's coming within two or three months. And I'm not trying to tie anybody's hands, you guys know I support you, but we're that close to maybe straightening out a problem that surfaced because of this request.
But we also.
Make a motion, we spend the twenty-five thousand and straighten the rest of it out during the budget season.
We also have nine months left in this fiscal year. The budget doesn't take effect until July first of twenty-twenty-three.
So the new season just started.
Okay, answer this simple question. Which budget is this being requested to be withdrawn from?
Twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
So it's there.
But it's not accessible to them unless we approve it. So if there's another emergency that comes up, they have to come back to us again. In the meantime, possibly missing an opportunity to save money.
So this, this one was on Dahl Road. The last one was on Nattacook. That was a little bit more urgent and it was a bigger issue. Encompassed more. This one's a smaller project and was on a smaller subdivision road.
But it highlights the problem.
It does, it does. And, you know, we don't always, we don't usually have somebody in the neighborhood that could easily have done this. And yes, it would be a small amount, but we still would have probably saved something because they were, you know, within.
Sure. Lon, there wasn't a second to your motion, so did you want to withdraw it for now? Nancy, clear that up first because I didn't.
No worries, thank you. No, I get the sort of dilemma that they find themselves in. But I too get just concerned about funds being there without really parameters. And, I mean, we certainly have great faith in these people, but just as a matter of policy to have things sort of loose. And, you know, the other thing is I noticed, like, and I heard Dawn say, you only got one response to your, to the bid that you sent out. That's the other thing that, you know, I would hate to see it get to a point where one, whoever responds can write their own ticket and say, you know, well, there's, you know, knowing that the money's available and putting the town in a.
But that's going to happen regardless.
If only one bid comes in, only one, the person whose bid came in from is normally very good to the town. Gets a lot of our contracts because of that.
Is there something else we can do to, because I know, I asked that question about something a while ago. We all, very often it seems like we're not getting, you know, additional options for bids. Is there, is because you think everybody just has too much work and they don't need it or?
This is a bad time of year.
Yep.
Everybody's trying to finish up their projects that they're working on now.
So they don't want to commit to.
And this contractor is not that far from this location.
And he does a lot of work.
If he, I'm sure if he wasn't in town, it would have been a lot harder to get him to come to town. But this contractor bid is maybe a mile or two in town doing something else that could be put off while he comes in and repairs this. To answer your question, we're not asking for anything that the town council has not heard of in the CIP. There is the drainage line in the CIP. And that's what we're really asking for and it's for items like this. You know, we put a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars in for small drainage projects and repairs. And that's really what this one would be considered in our capital improvement plan is part of that two-hundred thousand dollars. What Kyle was referring to is that in years past, it would be a line item in the budget underneath that eighty-nine-ten account. And it would have been voted on and we wouldn't have came forward, we would have been just spending the money and it's there as that. But since it's a capital reserve fund and you are agents to expend, D R A has said that we have to come in front of you to get those items in the capital improvement plan approved on an individual basis. I do not have a problem in, honestly, if you want to just give us another fifth, if you want to just do it for twenty-five for this and another fifty for seventy-five, if that makes the council feel better. And at least those are smaller projects. And then if a bigger project comes in, we will definitely have to come in here, anything over that, to the town council for approval. If that's, if that would make it more amenable to the town council. It's just so we can have something that if we have these emergencies, we don't have to come back, we can just, here you go. You know, we can let out the contract.
If, if the line item you're talking about is literally labeled and identified as emergency drainage funds, then that's all it can be spent on. Does that help people feel more secure? That's not going to go anywhere else?
That's all this money can be spent on is drainage. Once you approve it.
As long as it's designated as that.
Yeah, once you approve it in your motion, it's for these, it's for drainage projects and that's all it can be spent on.
See, to me, that makes sense.
Because we were drawing it for a specific purpose out of the capital reserve fund. And whatever amount that you would want, you approve to withdraw, it could only be spent on those kinds of projects.
Yeah.
It could be, yes, just if you wanted to put that in there, it could only be emergency projects.
So that down the road, if we find out it wasn't an emergency, well, that's a whole different issue. But if it's designated as that, then that limits the use. You go more than that, crazy.
What might be the pleasure of the council?
Well, then they'd have to justify it to us once the report comes back.
You ready to entertain them?
Yep.
Yes.
Move to approve withdrawal of up to seventy-five thousand dollars from the road infrastructure capital reserve fund for the purpose of completing one existing emergency drainage repair estimate in the amount of twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand for future emergency projects as they arise.
Second.
Let me amend that. Future drainage emergency problems as they arise.
Good, motion by Andy, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on the motion? Good. Call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Six, one, zero with Tom in the negative.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Tom.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks Lon.
I do want to mention that hopefully they can be able to work it in their schedule so they can come in next week to be able to get this buttoned up before the winter season hits because we don't want to be plowing over a plate.
No.
No.
That would be hard to plow, yeah.
Yes, it would be.
Yeah.
Alrighty. I had number six under new business, council to consider the recommended updates to the current winter maintenance policy, which includes the previously separate salt use policy within it. And here's Kyle and Lori to make this presentation to us.
Now, we currently have a sand salt use policy that is at least thirty years old. And as you know, thirty years ago, roads in town, what can be used for salt and sand and what we should be just using sand has changed. And I tasked Kyle and Lori with this project after last winter season to come up and update the policy. And they are bringing forward the policy in the audience's M V D as well. And they have seen the, Merrimack Village has seen the policy as well as a couple constituents in the town who had an interest in the policy. Actually, the constituent in town was very appreciative and very complimentary of the policy. Mr. Cronin, I believe it's Cronin, right?
Cronin.
Cronin, Mr. Cronin. And he did see this and he was very, he liked it and was complimentary of the policy.
Very good.
Kyle and Lori will give you the specifics and what they updated.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, town council. Kyle Fox, public works director, here with me is Lori Barrett, our operations manager. And so we'll try and keep this brief. The, like I said, the package we gave you is a hundred plus pages. So we'll try and keep it as brief as we can. As Paul mentioned, he tasked us with updating the winter maintenance policy and the salt use policy for the town of Merrimack. So Lori and her folks really did a great job trying to craft it and came up with a draft that took a bit of time to develop. Once we had a formal draft, we sent it out to a number of our stakeholders in town. And sent it out for comments to them. And received quite a number of comments, which were really, really good for us to have. And hopefully for you guys to weigh in your deliberations on the policy. In the packet that I gave you, first is the policy itself. The policy that we're actually going to ask you to adopt tonight is really just the first four pages of that entire package. That, and one of those pages is the signature page. The actual policy document is short, concise. And what it does is it informs and directs our procedures. The next package in the document is our draft procedures document. And we drafted the procedures in accordance with the draft of the policy. Should the council decide to change anything in our draft of the policy, that would likely result in changes of the procedures as well. And the reason we do the two documents separately is that the procedure document is meant to be a living document. As personnel changes come, as equipment changes come, as different storms come. It gives us the ability to, within the guidance of the policy, to react and make changes on the fly as we need to. As is dictated by any operations group. Next in the package is the previously approved salt use policy, which was approved by the selectmen in November of nineteen eighty-four. It's still the policy we follow today. And that policy was largely driven by two factors. One, the proximity of drinking water wells, private drinking water wells. Basically, where did M V D not have water lines in town? And it was driven by the well locations of M V D. And then finally in the packet is the request for comments and the response to, or the response to the request we sent out. There's comments from police department, New Hampshire D E S, Conservation Commission, from Tim Thompson on behalf of the planning board, and Merrimack Village District. So the first thing I wanted to mention was, why do we have a winter maintenance policy anyway? Why is it important and why do we care? There's two RSAs I want to bring your attention to. The first one is two thirty-one ninety-two, and these aren't in your package, so I apologize for that. But the RSA two thirty-one ninety-two is the liability municipality standard of care RSA. And basically what that one says is, as long as we're doing our duty as we should, without negligence, the town is protected liability wise from lawsuits and such. The companion to that RSA is RSA two thirty-one ninety-two A, which goes further to talk about snow, ice, and other weather hazards. It says, notwithstanding RSA two thirty-one colon ninety to ninety-two, a municipality or school district shall not be liable for damages arising from inefficiencies or hazards on public highways, bridges, or sidewalks, even if it has actual notice of or knowledge of them when such hazards are caused solely by snow, ice, or other inclement weather. Goes on to say some other things. So those two RSAs are the liability protection for the town and why it's important for us to have a policy. In addition to, it allows the council to shape the level of service and the response of the department to winter maintenance events. So with that, I'll get into the policy itself, the draft policy. So as I said, it's a fairly concise document. The first part of it is the objective. It's the goal and intent of the town of Merrimack to provide efficient, environmentally responsible, and cost-effective winter maintenance, snow removal, and ice control on the roadways, sidewalks, and municipal parking lots of the municipality for the safety and benefit of the town's residents, businesses, and general public. I'm not going to read the whole policy to you, I'll just highlight a couple areas. But that's really the goal. It's, we need to provide proper maintenance for the town during the winter at a cost-effective level and environmentally responsibly level. Moving on to page two, one of the more important parts of the policy is the low-salt or salt-free areas. Whereas they were two separate policies back in the eighties, we've combined both policies into one document moving forward. We wanted to take an approach that was different than was done in nineteen eighty-four in that it sets repeatable and understandable guidelines for us and for the residents and businesses of Merrimack. We get a lot of calls in our no-salt zones, why aren't you taking care of my road? Well, we are, but we have restrictions. This policy is very. This policy is very clear and concise on how we're going to maintain those. And I'll read those to you. So our no-salt routes are going to consist of all of our gravel roads, because you can't put salt on a gravel road. It would just make a mess. And subdivision roads within the wellhead protection area. Those are the roads that would be dedicated no-salt roads. Limited salt routes would be collector and artera roads within the wellhead protection areas and subdivision roads without access to public water. So again, we wanted to maintain the, the consistency what, of what was thought of in nineteen eighty-four.
Did they used to be no-salt?
No, they were limited salt as well.
Always have been.
Yep. So that's not really a change. And then salt routes would be any other road that doesn't fall into those categories. And that's not to say for every storm, we use salt on every road. The weather conditions dictate when we use chemicals. So it's, that's one of the important parts. One of the philosophies of our, of our policy is that whenever possible, we remove precipitation from the roads by mechanical means. And that's by use of a plow. And Lori's done a great job the past couple of years trying out a couple new systems that make some smaller plow blades. They're, they're bendier. I don't know what the best phrase is, but, but they do a better job on uneven surfaces of scraping the, the roads clean and really doing a, a good job of helping us to, to limit the amount of chemicals we have to put down. With that, the other key component of our program is anti-icing versus de-icing. It takes a tremendous amount more salt to melt ice than it does to keep the bond from forming. And, and that's really the goal of our program and, and has been for two decades at least. That's why you'll see in the procedures, there's a section that talks about pre-treating the roads. The purpose of pre-treating roads is to prevent that bond so that the plows can scrape the precipitation off without having to re-treat. So that's the whole point of that. The next section I wanted to highlight in the draft policy is.
Sure.
Turn your mic.
Number, but second page, the second page of your standard operating policy, right at the very top. You talk about it's the town's policy to start after two inches of snowfall. And then the next sentence, you're going to use mechanical means plowing, I think that means, before implementing chemical use. Does that mean? Does that preclude pre-treatment?
It does not. No. Often the, the, the pre-treatment goes on as the snowfall is starting. So what, what you may see is the precipitation starts, the guys have been called in. The, the, we have five trucks that go out on the pre-treat routes. They'll go out and pre-treat the routes as the precipitation is starting. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, you want to get it before the bond forms. But two, for salt to work, it takes moisture to activate the salt. And the precipitation from the snow actually helps to activate the salt. So the timing for that is, is important. But then, once, once the pre-treatment arrows are down, then we start plowing it to inches. That, that's kind of the intent.
Okay. You don't use chemical in the no-salt areas?
Correct. Okay. Yes, that's.
I happen to live in one. I'm just curious.
Yep.
We know.
So there's no pre-treatment there?
Right. No. No. We, we know because our roads aren't terrific, but we, we know why they're not.
Right.
It's, it is what it is.
Yep.
We get a lot of sand, not chemicals.
Right. Yep.
It's called aggregate in here.
Yeah, we use a couple terms for that. Aggregate or abrasives.
Abrasives, there you go.
One of the next sections, mailboxes on page three, we're proposing a, a sort of a change of how we do business today. Just to try and clean it up and make it clearer. What we're proposing is that the town will only replace mailboxes if they have been previously installed to USPS, that's the Postal Service, standards and are able to withstand the weight of lateral force of the snow rolling off a plow. Posts that are poorly installed, rotted, or too weak to withstand winter weather are not the responsibility of the town. Mailbox and post replacement is a standard-sized white or black mailbox with a four-by-four pressure-treated post, which is what we call our standard installation. If the property owner chooses, they may be reimbursed the cost of a standard installation towards his replacement of the mailbox if they had something fancier or wanted something different. Should a difference of opinion between the property owner and the town occur regarding the replayer, repair, or replacement of the mailbox or post, a claim would be submitted to our, to, to Primex, our town insurance carrier. So that's what we're proposing to do. You know, that it's. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I can wait till you've done that section if you want, right? I wonder, why would we do that? Why, why would we go through Primex for something like that? Because it's in the town right of way. And I, I mean, I don't, I'm glad we do it and I want to continue to do this, what your suggestion of the four-by-four pressure-treated with a white or black mailbox. But anything beyond that, we don't even have to do that, I don't believe.
So we do. Mailboxes are the only item that are allowed within the right of way without our discretion. They're allowed by federal law, US Postal Service law. So they, the residents have a right to have their postal mailboxes there. And if we damage them, we do have to repair them.
Very good.
The reason why we go to Primex is because some people have very expensive mailboxes. Case in point, there was a mailbox that was done by an architect that mimicked their house. And it got hit. And that could be very expensive and that's an insurance claim. And that's why we go to Primex to let them go through, because they'll take depreciation, they'll do other things. Other people have not a, they have granite on, on their house. And if they want that reimbursed, they have to go the extra mile and go to Primex for, for that. A lot of people do have these plastic mailboxes. They're great in the south, but in the cold and northeast, when you're rolling snow and it's cold out, they crack. Things of that sort. They brittle. We'll give you a standard mailbox issue with the pole, with a four-by-four pole, if that's what you want. If you want something different, you have to go through the insurance company to get it.
Okay. Now that I have a new understanding, why, why would we? I mean, if, if we have to replace them, why wouldn't we then have to replace, you know, something that's a hundred fifty, two hundred bucks that we wouldn't go to the Primex necessarily? Why, why wouldn't we be replacing what they had?
So we're, we're making a proposal.
Okay, because my game was changed tonight by you. Because I thought it was different than that.
Yeah. So we do that now. And I, and I will say, you know, from sixteen years ago when I was hired, I've come around on mailboxes from when I first started and I thought, why are we doing this? Many other towns take the approach and the state takes the approach. We're not doing a thing for you. There's, in, in the winter, you know, there, there's a lot of frustrations by people that, poor people in the winter. And, you know, we cause many of them. They've just finished their driveway and then we bring the snowfalls by.
Yeah, that happens to me every storm.
They can't do forty miles an hour during the storm and mailboxes, you know, they're.
I'll tell you, I'm doing it just to be.
Right, right. So they're all aggravations. And I, I will tell you that we get a lot of angry phone calls about mailboxes. We also get a lot of really great phone calls after they see the service we provide. So we're not proposing to change the service we do. Lori and her folks do an amazing job. One of the ones that gets us the most, the post office requirement is thirty-eight to forty-two inches in height above the, the ground. And that's all good and well, because our, our, our wings fit under there. Perfect. Except for the folks with the granite mailbox that have the scrolly metal brackets that, that we may catch our wings on. Or, or, or granite's also famous for having little veins and, and honestly, it's the weight of the snow. Most of the mailboxes that go down are not from us hitting them. It's from the weight of the snow coming off of the plows. So that said, Lori's crew does an amazing job. They put out temporary mailboxes in buckets right of way.
I've had a couple of them.
They'll, they'll, they'll take the granite, the, the brackets off of the granite posts. They'll take them back to the shop, put some heat to them, get them back into shape, repaint them, put them back out. They, they work really hard to, to do right by our residents and we're not proposing to change that. What the only change we're proposing is the demand for hundreds of dollars of replacement for a mailbox. Just because we don't think it's fair for, for the taxpayers of, of Marimac to subsidize somebody who wants a special. Now, if that's a decision the council wants to make, we're fully supportive of whichever direction you want to go. But I wouldn't change how we, how we approach mailboxes because as I said, it, it is probably the singlest, single biggest frustration turned to goodwill that, that we have in the winter.
I, I agree. That's, I think you can keep them on your side by continuing what you do. I'm just intrigued though that it's something we have to do and the state doesn't do it, you say?
Right.
So that's interesting, but.
Right. Very good. And then the last section, substantial section is the damage to private property. And this kind of goes into, to what you were talking about, Finley. The town shall not be held liable for damages to private property that is located within the public right of way. And again, that's in RSA two thirty-one colon ninety to ninety-two A. In the event of personal property damage, the town will only be responsible to repair or replace damaged property having been in actual contact with the snow removal equipment that is on private property and not within the public right of way. In the event that lawn damage occurs during plowing operations, the town will repair damage in the spring. Again, it's another goodwill thing that we do. We don't have to, but we do because of the goodwill it provides. Many people are unsure about where the property lines are and where their lawn actually ends. But they do maintain it all the way to the pavement and we're very cognizant of that. You know, people take, you know, spend a lot of good money, take a lot of care into their lawns. So when we do scrape up the edge of their lawns, we do go out and fix it every spring. We spend a fair amount of time doing that. And again, it's that goodwill gesture. The town will assume no responsibility for damage to underground irrigation systems, again, located within the right of way. Private lighting, trees, shrubs, fencing, or similar landscaping installed in the right of way during snow plowing or ice control operations. So that in a, in a nutshell is the policy we're proposing to you. We'd certainly be happy to answer any questions or comments you have.
Thanks, Kyle. Just want to clarify. So if, for the homeowner that has the granite mailbox and whatever, some fancy, if it's, if it's properly installed and meeting the guidelines, are you saying that the, what would be the replacement would be just that four-by-four and a wider metal?
That's what we're proposing, yes.
Okay.
Or, or the, the cash value of that installation.
Okay. So it would not be replaced in kind?
They would have to take on the repair themselves. Unless they want to go to the insurance company.
They would, unless the.
Homeowner wants to place a claim with the insurance company.
With their own insurance company?
No, with our insurance. With the town's, with the town's insurance company. We're going to replace with a four-by-four stock pressure-treated post and a black or white mailbox. If the homeowner has a mailbox, that's a granite post. I, I just cursed myself. I have a granite post. It's been installed for thirty years. Right? Yeah, right. It's been, and it's been installed properly because it's made it through thirty years of snowstorms. If for some reason this year they get hit and it breaks, they're going to come out and give me a four-by-four post with a regular mailbox. If I wanted to get a granite mailbox replaced, I'd have to take the next step and go to, and, and put a claim in to Prime, to our insurance company through finance for replacement of that granite post.
But, but simply putting in a claim doesn't necessarily fix it, right?
It does necessarily doesn't.
Company that the town's liable and.
Right, right. Which would show because they would have to veer to the right and come in, which we talked to.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering if the, if the policy, if this policy is as written, would that insurance thing be negated? Because, you know, whether you're eligible for it or not, if the town says it's only going to do this, I'm not sure that insurance.
Like anything, you could go to court and sue the town saying that the town was liable for damage to, to this greater amount. The policy merely says, this is what we'll do as a default. If you want to go further, go further. Either go to the insurance company or go to court. And the insurance company presumably would cover us for any court losses, right? So there's not really a difference.
No, I'm, I'm just thinking that if the, if the policy of the town is this, I'm not sure how successful people would be going to an insurance company. I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of, to make people whole, that if they've spent, you know, a lot of money on something that gets destroyed just like their neighbors across the street, the cost to repair for those two different homeowners is very different based on what was there. And I get the, you know, replacing, you know, simply this way. But if somebody's followed all the rules that we have and has an investment on their property in the, you know, saying you can go to an insurance company, I'm not, I'm just concerned that this almost, almost disallows.
Primex does cover. Does, do they not? Or have they not? They, they may or may not. They would look at the circumstances and they would follow the RSAs that I've talked about.
A lot of the time, Primex would cover mailbox posts and mailboxes. What they have a hard time sometimes is the shrubbery, the fences, things of that sort that are in the right of way.
Right.
But a mailbox post, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom. You've been doing it for two years now. They, I have really seen them say, we're not going to cover it.
Rarely.
Rarely say they're not going to cover.
Granite post.
Rarely say that.
We haven't had, we haven't had too many of them that have come down. They, they have covered them in, in some cases. I don't know whether it would be most, but yeah, all they've got to fall back on is the RSA. So it, it becomes a little.
It's, it's mostly the fence, the, the fences and the shrubbery that I've seen that they've come out and really take a hard look at these mailboxes.
All right. Sorry about that.
Speechless.
I was stuck for a second.
Still on mailboxes. So what is the reasonable timeframe upon completion of the storm that they will at least get a temporary mailbox?
So that depends on when the storm completes and.
Usually within a couple of days, usually.
How long of duration it's been.
Okay.
Usually within a couple of weekdays.
Okay.
We'll, we'll at least get a temporary out there.
Yep.
The crew does a great job. Lori and her staff orders probably forty setups at the beginning of every winter. So we have them on hand and we can get them out quickly. We know, we know people getting mail. It's, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
I've had it happen twice. And the first time was after a horrible couple of storms and you ran out of them. But I had one within, within, within a week because you had to make more. The second time, the biggest problem is they don't call. And they're without the mail. I don't get mail. We'll call.
Yeah.
That's primarily the problem is they don't realize they can get the temporary. You'll see these half-broken mailboxes and, and beg.
It's like a snowbank.
And a couple of times I would have stopped and said, you know, you could get.
So.
Most of it's not lack of knowledge.
My other question has to do with the next paragraph where it says, the weight or lateral force of the snow rolling off a plow. That like put me into snow shock the first few years I moved to New Hampshire because I was, where I lived before, my mailbox was. Where I lived before, my mailbox was around the corner. So the plow never got any speed up going around that corner. So I have one of those poles. The granite poles with the curlicues on it and sure enough. I keep a temporary mailbox in my garage. So but how is someone to know what the lateral force of the snow if if their. Setup originally is going to withstand that? Because the lateral force of the snow changes from twenty miles an hour to forty five busting down Back River Road, so.
Yep, it does. Um for most storms, if it's a properly installed. Wouldn't both say that that's not rotted. It it's going to withstand the forces of the snow. Again, uh our our biggest. The call for for customers is uh. You know, rotted pole posts that or you know, aged posts and 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 again, not from us hitting them, just. But again, that lateral snowpores. And 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 we just, we despite what the policies have said in the past and even what this one is proposing. We're not going to argue with somebody that know your post was rotted. We're not fixing it. We're we're just going to fix. Uh we're we're not looking to make enemies of our residents. There there are customers, there are supporters. So, yeah. Anything further, Kyle? It's a pleasure of the council.
So did you got responses from a lot of people, including MBD? I see MBD here on in the back here, uh the letter from. I think it was Ron Minor. Uh you gave some responses to and read. When I read it, it didn't seem to me like they answered the questions directly. And so I'm wondering if. If you guys had some back and forth to to confirm or verify that this was a satisfactory set of answers. As far as salt use or pretreatment or any of those kinds of things.
We haven't had the opportunity to get back together formally. Um I have had a few conversations with Superintendent Minor. Um I've also had some lengthy phone conversations with Commissioner Preventure, uh both of who are here. Um I'm sure they'd welcome the opportunity to speak if the council would would let them. There there's a lot of this that uh they're they're not going to agree with. Uh because you know, they have their concern um for their wells and and rightfully so. And I do share their concerns. But I also have the public safety concern to to factor in and and what we think is we we're we're confident. We came up with a good balance of both. Um I I think you may hear a different uh tone on that from from Ron and. And Don. And and you know, it it's all about balance and and trying to do the right thing.
I I um I think I mentioned before that one of my longstanding concerns here is the salt use. Um and the health impacts on community members here. And I know I've attended a number of meetings at the MBD. Um and I was really happy to see that this is being addressed, but I would love it maybe if we could have MBD. Sort of weigh in and speak to their thoughts because I know this has been an issue that's they've put a lot of thought into and I would. Given the other um issues that we're dealing with with our water contamination. I I think this is the time to be proactive and take the opportunity to really be cautious about what we do when we're talking about. So thank you. Thanks, Don and Ron.
Sure, I'll I'll have something to say if unless the rest of the council wants to continue to ask questions or whatever, but. Uh I'll take this opportunity now. I'm Don Preventure from the MBD, Ron Meyer, behind me is Superintendent. Um I'd just like to say if if there's a is much attention provided to the groundwater situation as to the mailboxes, we'll be in great shape. Um but no, um I do want to thank Kyle and Lori. We've met before. Uh they've uh come to um. Meet with us at the MBD meetings in the past and I did have a phone conversation with Kyle several months ago. While the policy was being developed and everything, so thanks for that. I'm glad the ball's rolling. I think everything is uh moving forward. Um but obviously, this um letter, um the responses were not. Uh I was just aware of them, you know, recently. So I think there's still some more back and forth that needs to go on this. Um one of our consultants, Jamie Emery, you know very well uh from the MBD. We had a conversation about this. He had opportunity to review um the the comments. He provided the comments here. Um he wasn't here. He's not here tonight. We weren't sure if we'd have an opportunity to speak or how long we would have to speak, so. Um one of the things he recommended um was he thought it would be a great idea if we can have. Um maybe a workshop or a a meeting with um. You know, certain uh members of either the the council here, maybe the town manager, somebody from the planning board. MBD and and Jamie himself. He's got a lot of experience. He cites a um. A project, that salt reduction project that he was part of uh for the city of Dover. Um and in Dover, the water department is part of the town, so you know, it's all the same. There the the issues with the water system are the issues that face. Um you know, the town managers and everything, so it's all it's all jointly um considered, right? Obviously, in this time, separate, but essentially, you know, the water issues in this town are just about. Um everybody's issues, so it is important to get everybody together. And as as you mentioned, Tom. Without having a dialogue back and forth on what of these comments, which of these comments can we uh? Try to move further on implementing. And obviously, this was sort of a wish list on our part. A lot of it did stem from the successes that Dover um had seen, uh as explained by Jamie. Um what they do in Dover is that they actually do the anti-icing with liquid brine. Um and that doesn't need the precipitation to sort of catalyze the salt because it's already in liquid form. And according to Jamie, they were able to really significantly reduce their salt application and their cost. Uh by going to this this anti-icing pretreatment liquid brine. Um so I think we would certainly like to get together and and talk about different options. And I I think it makes sense probably to have this workshop. Um and maybe in Jamie's recommendation is to, you know, have that before we consider. Um approving this policy at this point because there may be other things that we may be able to do jointly. Between MBD and the town to kind of work towards. Um some of these comments that we had made, particularly with the pretreatment with the brine. Um I don't think we're doing that right now. I know we're mixing the um brine liquid with the crystallized salt. Um but that's different than what Jamie's talking about was been successful in Dover. So uh that that's his recommendation is that if we can have some kind of a committee uh or a workshop. That we can actually talk about these these comments in a little bit more detail than we have just in one evening tonight. Um but i- it's important, you know, you're probably all aware, um MBD has. Basically abandoned well three. We we would have needed PFAS treatment on that well. Would have been an investment that we would have had to make and we didn't feel comfortable making that investment. With the condition of the way the sodium and chloride is in that well. So instead, we pursued a new well. We were lucky to find a new well that doesn't have sodium and chloride impacts. Um so we've kind of moved away from well three. Um a similar situation on wells four and five. Uh one of the treatment uh um one of the treatment techniques for PFAS is anion resin. And we our consultants basically stepped away from that because of the level of sodium and chloride in those wells. So it kind of forced us into just considering carbon in those in those treatment for those wells. So. You know, this has an impact. Um it's already impacted MBD. It is impacting MBD. Um those levels of sodium and chloride do continue to elevate. Um and we didn't really, weren't really aware of the impact of it until we graphed the trajectory. And you probably saw those graphs. I think we were presented to you at least a year, probably a couple of years ago. Um you know, we have a salt committee that is formed now. We're extending an outreach to. Uh members of the planning board, uh Conservation Commission. Um you know, any the more people we can get involved in that. So it is a huge issue for us. Um you know, there there are some concerns we have in the procedures document because there are a couple of roads. If I'm not, uh if my memory serves me correctly, Natacuck Road and Continental are currently considered. No salt routes, I believe. And in the policy, I believe they're changing to limited salt, so. It's kind of going contrary to where.
The town portion I thought was limited salt. There's been no salt?
It it's a no-salt road. But even no-salt roads, uh we do have the uh liberty to use some salt as needed depending on weather conditions. Uh great example was last winter. Um I forget which month it was now. We had that freak ice storm where everything just iced up. And clearly, that's that's the kind of storm that that we need to put material down on our main roads. Uh similarly, as as the weather patterns have changed the last few years anyway. Uh we're getting a lot more ice storms than snowstorms. I think last winter, we only really had one true snowstorm. And the rest were more icy uh rainstorms. And those are frankly, the storms that we have to use more material. Uh than a than a straight snowstorm. Straight snowstorms are easy. Pretreat. Plow for however many hours, then we post treat, go home. The uh the the icy storms, we end up treating throughout because there's so much precipitation. It dilutes the. The effectiveness of whatever material you put out and we have to keep treating to to keep the motoring public safe.
It's hard, Don.
No, that's I I was aware of that. That's understandable. Obviously, in emergency situations, you you have to do what you have to do, obviously. Uh but you know, the just on the surface of that, looking at a road that's no salt going to limited salt. And just the sheer number of roads that have been in installed since nineteen eighty four, you know, the salt loading. In the wellhead areas is is significant, so. Um but there are there are better ways if we're going to apply. Um salt on those roads, it's it's better to do them uh pretreated with with a liquid brine.
Is the brine more expensive? Is that what the issue is? It we we've experimented with brine for a number of years. Uh we have not found it to be very effective uh for our roads. We don't have the same traffic that Dover does. One of the uh really the for for brine to really work or the way it's designed to work. Is hours before the storm, uh the department or or the municipality puts the liquid brine down. And it dries out and it sticks to the road. Then when the precipitation starts and the cars travel on the road, it pushes that around and and spreads it throughout the the uh. Width of the lane. And that's where you get your effectiveness. Where where we don't have the the same traffic volumes Dover does. Uh it hasn't been a very effective product for us. Um additionally, uh salt, you know, it's it's very limited in temperature. Once you get down below twenty. Uh brine just really isn't effective at all because you're you can just be creating ice. Instead of trying to to help, you're hurting the situation. Uh we'll. But we're continuing to to try and improve our processes all the time. Uh we're going to continue experimenting. Uh Lori's uh in the process of of. Uh working out a new contract where we're gonna uh pre-wet. Our rock salt at the spinners uh of the trucks with liquid calcium chloride. Uh magnesium chloride, sorry, thank you. And that what that's going to do is is allow us to use less salt. Uh because the mag chloride will activate the salt quicker. And the mag chloride operates it or is effective at much lower temperatures than regular sodium chloride or rock salt. Uh so we're hoping to see a reduction from that. Arbor.
Is magnesium a problem?
Um not off the top of my head with its applied and you know, adequate quantities. Um I'm not really sure. That that that's again, something that I'm sure Jamie could probably explain better off. I know. He has also said that, uh and I don't know if it's a different kind of brine that Dover is using, but. According to him, that it's much more effective at lower temperatures um than twenty and. You know, I would think that the you know, the the roads that kind of stick out in my mind are Natacuck Road and and Continental Boulevard. Especially Continental Boulevard. I mean, that is. Right in the heart of the Aquafor Protection District of Wells Two and our new well nine. And those two wells are going to supply over fifty percent of our our source water. So it's kind of important that we look at those those areas. And I have to think that the traffic on those roads. Must be enough to make the brine use effective. I I don't know. If the attempt of brine that was done in town was done on Natacuck Road and Continental or not, but. You know, that's something I think we could we could talk to. But again, I I just want to leave the the commission, uh the the council here with a. A recommendation from MBD from from Jamie himself, who is. Um you know, done a lot of this work and is well experienced that. If we can get together and and maybe go over some of these um comments a little bit deeper. Um you know, there are grants available for um you know, wellhead protection, source water protection grants. Uh may maybe able to get some additional assistance for some of this equipment. Um you know, MBD has a certain interest in this, obviously, so we could. Talk about sharing some of the cost burden as well. It's not something that we're just looking at throwing on the town. And by the way, you know, I want to commend the town for having us here and just talking about this and having a policy. There are a lot of private parking lots out there who are just as much, if not more, you know. With the salt application than the town road, so it's not just the town, but I think the town moving forward. With implementing something a little bit more, you know, a little bit more modernized that that's done in other locations that's effective. Kind of sets an example that we can point to and try to have some of our uh private parking lot owners. Step up and kind of follow that example because you know, the more surface area that we can get uh with better treatment. That's really what's going to knock down the um the salt load. You know, the salt load is something that will will go away over time. Uh as a matter of fact, back in twenty eleven. Um there was um a salt mitigation policy implemented over in our wells seven and eight over in um. Amherst and Hollis. Um in one of the one of the big parking lots over there was Home Depot, you know, some of the big box stores over there. We got them to change their practices and we could actually see the trajectory in the graph reverse. It started coming back down. Um Fidelity's been working with us. We actually started a salt committee, salt reduction committee. Kyle's been in in most of those meetings and Lori as well. That's been going on for about two years. It hasn't really got the traction that I would have hoped that it had by now, but it's moving. Um and you know, with with that happening, we're trying to get the word out there and have everybody. That has a an interest that, you know, owns land in the wellhead protection areas to do some of this proactively. Um and this is all being proactive right now. This is nothing, there's no bylaws that are enforced or there's no bylaws that exist. The only thing that does exist is the planning board um does require um no salt in. Developments, new developments that come before them in the Aquafor Protection Districts. So that's helpful. But there's a lot of property that's already developed. I mean, all along Continental, all those properties are they're grandfathered. So and you can walk around those. I drive up and down Continental and I can see the salt in all those parking lots, so.
Do you guys talk with those folks, those businesses, Don?
We we have and we've invited them to come to join that salt um committee meeting, so.
Because I think most people see the goodness in trying to lessen salt use. Before us a couple of years ago, it seems like, and I think we were all on board and I think Kyle and Lori understand that same situation. If it's if it's all about cost, then I'd have to hear that to weigh those things out from a town perspective. I. Willing to spend some money if that were the case personally, can't speak for my colleagues, but. But so those type of things that we should do and I'm I'm always. These guys come and say, we have a great idea to lessen it. I'm all ears and um so I think um. I I would encourage the Village District to speak to those businesses where they're already established planning board, can't do anything about that. But um those conversations, I think most businesses would be uh is understanding as I think we are and. Sensible people.
Yeah, and you know, we've offered to. Yeah. And you know, we've offered to publicize that, you know, good press, good environmental stewardship. That's, that's great publicity for businesses, you know, and, and. When we see somebody implementing something, we'll be sure to follow up on that, you know, but. Um, so we're still sort of in the beginning stages of the salt reduction committee and, and that's starting to take off. You know, we've gotten, I think, most of the, um, meetings we've had, maybe seven or eight, six or eight, maybe ten, twelve people. The DOT, state DOT participated and one or two of them.
I was going to ask, how is the state doing? Cause they own a lot of Continental.
Right. An industrial drive, so.
No.
No, they're not doing a no salt.
No.
And they're probably want much more of a culprit than we are.
Well, in those areas, they certainly are. And again, well, three is the one that's kind of right at the, behind the, uh, Duncan Dawn. It's there behind the MBD office. So. You know, that, that's got a lot of impact from that intersection. But anyways, I, I said what I wanted to say and I, you know, if you have questions, by all means. Either Ron or myself can, can answer. So thanks.
Thank you, Don.
Yep. Just one final comment that when, if you're having discussions about the use of brine. Um, maybe we could loop in our health officer. Cause I'll tell you something about the brine. When, when you're, it gets spread and it aerosolizes. If you're an asthmatic, you know it. Um, and so it might be a good idea for her to be looped in. Um, so that just from a community health standpoint, you know, she's in the loop as well. Maybe put, maybe we can, you know, think about, you know, before snowstorms. You know, the pre-treatment is going to start. If you, you're an asthmatic and you're traveling the roads, you know, wear a mask. Anyway. Something to think about.
Um, I don't know how it works in terms of rules and things, but, um, I think the suggestion of a, of a meeting for the interested parties of. We certainly have the resources between the town and MBD. Um, I think we all want to be on the same page. We want the roads to be safe, but we also. Have seen what happens to our drinking water if we're not protective of it. And, and I think this is the time where. You know, a number of, um, you know, thinking heads with, with the experience in all the right places, it would make sense. To, um, have that discussion. I know it's sort of, we're coming down to a, you know, winter's coming. So, um, you know, time is sort of of the essence, but. Um, you know, I'd certainly be interested in, in, um, you know. Doing whatever we can to have, have some interaction, a, a meeting between the MBD and the town and. Us or how, however that would work, um, to, to address some of these. Issues that were raised that I think bear some more, um, review before, before I would be comfortable. Um, accepting this.
Thank you, Nancy.
No, I was just going to say, I, I don't have any problem with accepting this the way it is with the understanding that we're going to continue to have our dialogue. My question just came up with, you know, was, was there any more to this dialogue than this? Cause. It seems like they have some valid arguments and, and concerns, but having a salt policy in place is, is critical as well. And it, it gives guidance and gives some people who have had a lot of problems in the past. A little bit better understanding of where we are and what we're doing. So I, I don't have any issue with accepting this as developed. Understanding that it's a working document that we're going to continue to deal with. Cause that, my fear is that if we put a, a. Workshop or a, a committee in place, we're looking at six months to a year to get any kind of, of active. Work out of it, um, just the way it happens. I mean, look at legislative committees that have been put in place that take two or three years to decide that they're going to do something. And, and, um, I, I think in government, we just don't do a good job of, of that kind of stuff. Whereas we can do individual discussions with businesses and, and things like that on a much more real time basis. So I'd prefer seeing this, this accepted and go in place. With the understanding that Kyle pointed out that this is the working document behind the first three pages. And, and that can be adjusted and modified and, and dealt with as they go along, as we can develop better ideas. Thank you.
Yeah, I have the same confidence Tom has in terms of, uh, what's in front of us tonight. I relate a couple of experiences. One, uh. Former superintendent, uh, Jim McSweeney. And I came before the council, I want to say two oh three, two oh four, so. Somewhere in the, I, I can't remember how long you've been super. But, um, and the town at that time listened very, very carefully to the MBD's. Concerns. Initiated, by the way, around well three, but it was a general presentation we made. Terms of the amount of chloride. And another time, um, the superintendent miner and I went up and talked with, uh, premium outlets. Because they had been perhaps, uh, pulling some shenanigans we didn't like and we could see the result in well three. And they were. And cooperative with us. Uh, they were working with a maintenance contractor who agreed to. Cut out the rock salt and so on, or at least to the degree that it was bothersome. So it's. Again, I have the same confidence Tom has as long as this is a working document because I know the MBD will work with the town. I know the town and the MBD can. Talk to some of the larger, uh, residential complexes. And, and commercial outfits and they'll listen. You won't get a hundred percent. As you might want the day you talk to them, but over time. So I'm ready to go with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lon.
Yeah, if, if I may, just to add some commentary. I appreciate everything Commissioner Preventer said and, and I, I do want to assure everyone on the, the council. We work really hard at providing the, the level of service we do. While maintaining environmental, um, consideration. Uh, Merrimack frankly has been ahead of the game forever. To have a reduced salt policy way back in nineteen eighty-four is frankly remarkable. Considering how laissez faire people have been, you know, over the decades about. And we've carried on that tradition throughout Public Works, whether it was Dave Lent before me and Ed Chase before him. Um, it, it's always been foremost. Don mentioned the, uh, the salt mitigation meeting that he's been holding. Lori and I have been to every single meeting. Unfortunately, we seem to be the only ones at the table and one contractor that shows up consistently. Uh, DOT is routinely not there. The big parking lot, uh, owners are not there. Uh, it, honestly, it's frustrating for me. Uh, because Jamie rolls out that same presentation every time. And shows his graphs and, and we're in the room, so he points the finger at us. And, um, I think, I think we're doing a good job. I do. Um, well, three is a, is a really prime example. There's a lot of really big commercial parking lots there. And you have the state's actually, the Boulevard directly adjacent to it. Um, I've been at this long enough that I recall in two thousand and eleven. Uh, we worked with the DOT, um, Turnpike Bureau and they did a pilot program. Uh, some of you may remember the message boards that were out there that winter, where the state actually did reduce their salt use. On their section of Continental Boulevard that winter of two thousand and eleven. And their road looked a lot more like our road does in the winter. Uh, but it was very successful and why they didn't continue it, I'm not sure. Uh, whether it's manpower or, uh, lack of manpower or, or some other reason, they didn't stick with it. But it, it, it often feels like because we're the one in the room, we're the one getting picked on and. And I just want to share my confidence in, in the policy we've given you. That it is environmentally responsible and safety responsible. So I just wanted to add that piece in.
Is there such a thing as a low salt use or whatever ordinance at the town level?
That's what we're.
So this would become, even for businesses?
So no, that's, that, I'm not sure what the approach would be for that.
That's why I asked.
That, that may be for your next job.
Jump in if you want on that. I know, um, we've actually had our legal, um, council look into that. And they basically said it would have to be a bylaw that would be passed, I think by this board or the planning board. I don't think MBD has the, um, authority to do it. So it would, it would have to be a separate bylaw to have the private landowners. Again, this is, this is a commitment on the town to do this proactively, what, what the policy is in place here. But to have, um, the private landowners have to abide by something would have to be a bylaw. And again, we're hoping we can have this be successful voluntarily first before. You know, putting a governmental bylaw in place, right? Everybody would think that would be a last resort, but.
Yeah, because down by you on Route Three, it's only going to get worse because there's building going on on the west side of the outlets. So.
Right.
That's going to be another big parking lot that's going to undergo a lot of treatment.
Yeah. And luckily that is, you know, approved after, that, that's subject to the planning board.
Right.
So there should be no, um, you know, salt usage on that, on that property. So. It, it's the, it's the landowners that, that predate the, um, that policy or whatever. The, the planning board. Instituted that. I don't know when, what year was that? I don't even remember what it was, but.
I know, I know we do mandate, you know, where they're going to snow storage as well as what they're doing for green. So, okay.
Yeah, you know, I just want to say, if, if it sounds like there's, there's some kind of a, um, interest in having a, you know, discussing this further. And, and Kyle and I had this conversation that the policy is, is the document, but the procedures that can be changed. So I understand that. I think the policy, the only thing, the wrinkle that I see is, is it calls out the, um. The arterial roads in the wellhead protection areas as limited salt. Whereas now I think they're no salt. So if we wanted to change that later, we would just have to change the policy or something or.
Well, that's, that's why I asked the question. Cause I said to you specifically, the collector and arterial roads. Cause I was quoting your thing and you said, no, that had not changed. I asked if it was changed from no salt to limited salt and you said, no.
The roads.
The collector and.
I thought you were talking about the roads, uh, without MBD water availability.
Okay.
That's what I was answering.
Okay, so the, so the collector roads and the arterial roads near the. That has been changed from no salt to limited?
Correct. That's what we're proposing.
Why?
Because of safety.
Okay.
Because.
Let me ask you, I'm going to counter, give the argument right back to you.
Yeah.
What you're saying is a no salt roads right now. In an emergency, when you get that freezing rain, you do in fact put salt down because you have to.
Correct.
Why can't that be maintained now? Why not keep it no salt? But in those circumstances where you need to, you need to.
Well, we can. We were trying to be honest with the policy, frankly.
Well, you can still be honest with the policy.
But I think the point is that they're, they're being conscientious as they go and they're not using salt if they can avoid it.
But if you're limited.
Limited allows them to use some salt, but that doesn't mean they definitely do use some salt.
So the, the stretch we're talking about of Natticook is by Wasserman Bark, Wasserman Heights. Um, it's a pretty good hill. And if we didn't do any treating there at all, uh, cars just wouldn't, cars would be off the road every single storm.
Okay. And that is.
Yeah.
Both of those hills on Natticook are similar problems.
Right.
That way. And limited salt use or whatever, no salt use starts right at Danforth.
Right. Correct.
And, and so both those hills are a real problem.
They are.
If it gets real icy.
Yeah. And, and that's the stretch we're talking about. And that's why, you know, we, we intentionally. Uh, made that change for the arterial roads because of, because of the practicality of it. And, and again, wanting to be honest with the council and, and what, we, we want to do what the coun- council. Authorizes. And we want to be honest in our approach and, and honest with the residents of what we're doing. And that's why we presented it the way we did.
I did, I don't know if I read it or I made an assumption. That some of the issues might occur as a result of having drivers unfamiliar with particular roads. For example, in our neighborhood, if you have a driver that's not familiar with our neighborhood, they may not know it's no salt. And they may in fact salt it by accident, not because they just don't know. Yeah, the plow drivers themselves. And that makes perfect sense to me because in the middle of a snowstorm. You may, and you're not covering that neighborhood necessarily. And all of a sudden you're asked to cover it, you wouldn't know. And one of the suggestions was to put more signage. And I think that's really, I know there's some, but there's not much. And I think that would also help in terms of the residents within that area becoming much more aware as well. Okay. So I would encourage you to use more signs and that might help. Mitigate those circumstances where you have new drivers and, oh, and it's a reminder, by the way, this is the no salt.
So I'm glad you brought that up. I, I touched on it in my memo.
Right.
Um, I, I didn't bring it up in an effort to try and save time, but it, it's a great conversation. And actually. It's an example of the great partnership we have. Um, MBD, uh, reached out through the wellhead protection grants this year. And got a grant for new signage to delineate the wellhead protection areas. They're in the process of procuring the signs. Once they get the signs imposed in, we're actually going to do the install for them. On our roads and it'll be every intersection of our road where it crosses into. Uh, in each direction into the wellhead protection areas of which there's three. Um, it's going to have their, their new sign that designates wellhead protection area. Once this policy is approved in whatever form it's approved, we're going to update our limited salt and no salt signing.
And put them.
Using those same posts.
Perfect.
Exactly right.
Perfect.
So that, that's in the works.
And it's self-explanatory.
Exactly. And, and that's kind of the symbiosis we've talked about, the, the district and us. Is, you know, Front Street and, and in your neighborhood, uh, Council Harrington. We, we get a lot of calls from new residents or visitors. Why is that road so terrible?
It's true.
And having their sign say wellhead protection area, along with our limited salt or no salt signs. Is going to be a really effective tool for us to say, did you see the sign?
Right.
Right. And the only other suggestion I would make is I know you're talking about making maps. Or make that available on the website.
We can do that.
And make it just really, you know, uh, no salt root, roads. Make it sound obvious and you can just refer people to that. I think if, you know, when you're talking about getting complaints. Here are the roads that are limited.
Yeah. And we've talked about that with the district as well. And Ron actually hand drew some maps up as, as examples. And, uh, we, we were waiting for the policy to be approved. So we knew exactly what to do before we spent the time creating the maps. Uh, once the policy's in place, we will create those maps and get them published.
Would it, if we included in the approval, in the motion to approve this tonight. Um, direction to DPW to work with MBD to reconcile their concerns and give a due date. No later than, and I'm just going to throw a date out there. We can argue the date, but no later than one January. For DPW to come back to the town council and give us an update on where we're at with reconciling the concerns of MBD. That way we approve this. We give Kyle and them, um, the policy that they're looking for. So they can go off and immediately implement that. Um, but at the same time, we address concerns. Um, councillor Murphy has the water and, which is an MBD as well, which is an important concern. We can go off and reconcile those concerns and maybe there's an update to the policy. And the date we give them to come back to the town council, we can address those, those changes. If it affects the policy, if it obviously, if it just affects the procedure, then that can be done, um, outside of the council. Paul, real quick and then Don, sorry about that.
So, not to split hairs, but you would direct me to get that done, and then I would direct DPW.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
It would come through me to, yeah, it's okay. No, but yeah, that and I was actually gonna. Before before I could get it out, Councilor Hunter beat me to the punches. I was going to suggest that. We will sit down with MBD in the next couple month or so to go over these concerns and and work together. And sit down and and work together.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you, Andy, for taking that beating on our behalf. Done.
As the newest.
Thanks. Well, I I actually think that's a great idea. I really do. Thanks for uh coming up with that. And as far as the signage, I think it also benefits the um, the salt truck driver.
That's exactly.
May have just plowed for twelve hours, eighteen hours.
Reminder, oh, yeah.
You know, whenever you have to do something manually, it it just leaves, it it leaves it susceptible to human error and having signs is going to help. You know, there's GPS things you can put in trucks to adjust the spreader rate and everything, but. You know, these are all just ideas that I'd like to throw around. Maybe we can investigate costs. How how they can be funded, that type of thing. So if there's a commitment to have um, you know, somebody present at a workshop, a meeting or. That would be great. That that was really, that was really our number one goal tonight was to have a sort of a commitment to make. More dialogue happen, so I'm happy with that. I think we're we're happy with that. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Pleasure with the council?
So I'd like to make a motion uh to approve updates to the winter maintenance policy. Which includes the previous separate salt use policy. In addition, direction to the town manager to work with MBD to reconcile their concerns on this policy. And update the town council no later than one January twenty twenty three.
Motion by Andy Hunter, second by Lon. Uh, any further discussion on your motion? Andy, good? Be good?
Date of one January, okay with you? If we can't get it done, we'll let you.
There'll be a status report.
Status report on one one.
Yeah. All right.
Doesn't have to be an immediate, it could just be a report to the county.
Very good. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Lon.
Thanks. On behalf of the MBD, appreciate that. Thanks a lot.
Do we need to make a motion to extend?
Yes, you want to do that?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting beyond the ten o'clock.
Motion by Nancy, uh, seconded by Barbara, to extend the meeting beyond our ten o'clock.
Limit time or whatever.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, I guess we're good, seven zero zero. It's a way it was supposed to be for years now.
You're just.
He's keeping us honest. All right, uh, item number seven under new business, the council will consider the request to withdraw up to fifty thousand dollars. From the solid waste equipment capital reserve fund for the purchase of a new pickup truck with plow that was included in the approved twenty twenty two through twenty twenty eight. Capital improvement pro- program. Oh, go ahead, Kyle. I was waiting for Paul. Okay, thank you, Chairman Rothaus. Uh, the next two items are similar, so I'll give an introduction to this one, but it'll be the similar introduction for the next item, which Laurie will speak about. Uh, so um, in the in the approved capital uh improvement plan for this uh current fiscal year. Uh, the solid waste division had one piece of equipment that we proposed to buy, and that's a pickup truck with plow. To replace um an existing pickup truck with plow. Uh, typically, in the past, we would have come to the council, bids in hand and and. Scheduled the meeting to to make the purchase. Uh, we had a recent vehicle purchase in. In uh our wastewater group where bids came in and the bid said, good for three days. And I think you guys uh took action on that.
Right.
At uh a recent past meeting. So what we're trying to do tonight is get approval for an up to, for the purchase of this vehicle. So that we can react once we do get the bids in for the vehicle. And I'll leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Lon.
I just have to ask the question. What, why the, why the separation? Did you say that and I missed it?
The separation.
The single truck and.
The rest.
And the rest, they're both coming out of the same fund, correct?
Two different capital reserve funds. So that's fun, I should have said that. Thank you, uh, councillor, for the reminder. Uh, this money would be uh withdrawn from the solid waste equipment capital reserve fund. Thank you, Lon. Good, is there anything further? Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the withdrawal of up to fifty thousand dollars from the solid waste equipment capital reserve fund for the purchase of a. Four-wheel-drive pickup truck with plow. To authorize the town manager to sign any necessary documentation.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, second by Andy. Further discussion on your motion? See none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. Thank you, Kyle, Lori. Seven, um, last item, number eight, under new business, council to consider the request. To withdraw up to six hundred and ten thousand dollars from the highway equipment capital reserve fund for the purchase of seven new vehicles. Equipment that were, and equipment that were included in the approved two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty eight capital improvement program.
So I am also looking for a pickup. Thank you. The seven new pieces of equipment would be, would include a four-wheel-drive pickup with a plow. That would replace an existing vehicle that we have, a two thousand eight pickup. Um, two six-wheel dump trucks, one is a replacement of H twenty nine. And one is a new vehicle for the new operator that was approved with this July first budget. Um, a field tractor, which would replace our jo- uh. Our John Deere tractor, uh, two thousand eight. A new message board um that would replace our two thousand eight portable message board. And athletic field groomer that would replace our nineteen eighty eight Cushman. And then also a salt brine system that would go on the back of one of our new.
Speaking of the devil.
Switching ghost system.
Touche.
Cut, yes, Tom.
So these were all things that we discussed in in the past.
Correct.
We've all agreed that these were, that it's the appropriate time to replace these, and they've had the mileage or maintenance requirements or whatever.
Correct.
Just just so that we kind of get it out into the public that we're not just going out and buying trucks because we want trucks. Thank you.
It was easier the old way, though. Uh, Barbara?
Yeah, I can't remember the conversation about the electronic board. Uh, don't they still work?
We have two. Um, one is, this is the two thousand eight message board, and it no longer holds the solar charge. So the only time we can use it is if it is close to a plug.
Plugged in, okay, thank you.
That's why that one's sitting at.
At the fire station.
Fire station up by uh the homestead. So it's difficult if we have one out on a job site to pull that one or bring it anywhere but that one location, so it's stuck.
And and so the solar charging is not repairable, not replaceable?
We've replaced every component we can, and it's still not holding.
And it still won't hold it. Wow. Okay, thank you.
Andy?
So the, how are we, how do we plan to dispose the equipment that this is replacing? Is it trade-in? Is it auction?
Most of it's traded in and goes towards the purchase.
So whatever is not traded in will go to auction. Um, and I believe, we'll see, I don't think, like, a message board, they might not accept the trade-in on. That'll go up to auction in the springtime.
That that's correct, we.
Yeah, so that's why we'll go to auction.
There, there's actually a state bid that just came out in September for the message boards, so we know the pricing on that. Um, I did ask them if they would take the old one in trade, and they said, no. So that one definitively will go to auction. Are the auctions that we should, uh, like, I mean, instead of a trade-in, are there more, is there? It's, are there more opportunities uh with a, with an auction to get better value?
It depends, you're at the mercy of who's going up there and what's up there. Um, on the auction sites, um, actually the White Farm, if there's a bunch of six-wheelers, you might not get as much for it. It all depends on what vehicles are going up there at the time. We've been getting pretty good trade-in allowances on our trucks. We've uh, over the last couple of years, they, we do have, you know, pretty good trade-in values on them. So they're giving us a lot of money off the price, more than if we went to auction. It's a, it's rolling up the dice whether or not there's other six-wheelers up there that that can go. Um, I just, we use Minnesota Bid as an auction site as well. And for those people that are familiar, that's basically a nationwide bid, and there's been some. One tons that have gone for more money than I would expect uh on that site. But uh, not as much as we would get in on trade.
So what are the years, if you don't mind, on the H twenty nine and thirty two?
H twenty, H thirty two is brand new. There's not going to be a trade with that.
For the new, right, I'm sorry. H twenty nine is?
H twenty nine, oh, gosh.
If you recall.
Two thousand twelve.
Okay.
So it's ten years old.
So, yeah, these new, these newer vehicles should, we're anticipating twelve years out of them now instead of the ten? Yeah, with the the new highway garage, the the promise we made was to move everything to to twelve years. And and that's uh, that's in the CIP that you saw. Right, we shuffled it. Uh, we, we put some of them at eleven years, some of them at twelve, the newer ones at twelve. But the old ones stayed on the old cycle because they've been out in the elements that long. Right, and how much for H twenty nine? What would we kind of anticipate for a trade? What, I mean, historically, what have we looked at?
We're looking at twelve thousand.
See, I, I, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm just thinking an auction for that instead of a trade. We we could send, we can send it up to auction.
The the other aspect of that is that the money from auction goes to the general fund and not back towards the purchase of this vehicle.
Okay. All right. To a little bit greater degree. All right, very good. Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
One other question?
Tom, yes.
Did, people talked about, obviously, auction in the, or or, yeah, the message board. The message board is still good if you can plug it in, right? And you've got it in a place where you can plug it in. Is there any reason not to keep it there?
Yeah.
We do right now have it in a place where we can plug it in.
So.
Michael, just don't get rid of it.
Are we intending to get rid of it, or or can we keep it and and have it as?
We can keep it and have it as an additional.
I mean, the auction's probably not worth very much, I wouldn't think.
I could check off a goal.
And you you need an notification up at that part of town, so it serves a purpose.
We we.
Watson Park, right, there's a plug at Watson Park at the top of the hill also.
There are areas that we, if if it, if it, we, the council, there's areas where we can keep it and use it, but I just, we're not in. We're not in the mindset to keep, replace equipment and then keep the old stuff. So.
But we're short of signs, though.
But we're short of signs, which we're fine with, but we don't, you know, we're not in that mindset, you know, like the trucks. We're not going to keep a truck if we're going to trade it in kind of deal, because if we gotta, if we, if it's good enough to keep.
Space, and yeah.
If it's good enough to keep, we're going to keep it and use it, and that's the mindset that we're in. So that's why when we did the message board, you know, we're not going to keep it to keep it, but. It is one of the goals of the council is to expand the number of of those electronic signs, so we can definitely, Laura's, Laura's like all excited over there, she gets to keep it.
But I would just add the caveat, until the maintenance costs of it become unnecessarily high.
Not worth it to keep it, yeah.
Yeah, the the, talking with the message board manufacturers, that their quote typical life on these is eight years. Uh, so we're well over that already um on our board, and and it's showing. Uh, we put a fair amount of money into it just to keep it running in the shape that it is. Uh, to to keep putting money in, I don't think would be wise, but as long as it's. Running today, although there there were days last week when it wasn't running. But just, I don't want to, I want to temper expectations on the message board that's fourteen years old. Drove over the court the wrong way and it pulled it out of the sock.
Very, very good. Thank you.
Yes. Somebody like to make a motion?
Someone, um, I move we, we uh approve the withdrawal of up to six hundred and ten thousand from the highway equipment capital reserve fund. For the purchase of uh the seven designated pieces of equipment and authorize the town manager to sign any documentation necessary.
Second.
Motion by Tom Koenig, second by Nancy, I believe, yes. Any further discussion? See none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, uh, seven zero zero.
Let's clarify, it's Nancy Murphy.
Nancy Murphy, did I not say that?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Well, it's just for the person.
Thank you, and I'll get in a better habit of that.
That's sort of the way it goes.
Yeah. All right.
We had discussed it prior.
Last on the agenda is, um, well, almost last on the agenda, September twenty second, two thousand twenty two meeting minutes. Nancy, who's excused?
Yes, I was.
I move approval of the minutes from September twenty second, twenty twenty two.
Motion by Tom Koenig, second by Andy, are any uh, minutes look perfect?
Um, I I just had one question on page five of five, line thirty eight, under comments from the council, and so maybe Nancy can clarify the the. She recently attended a football game, and the field staff mentioned that if there are any Eagle Scouts, but what is the field staff that you're talking about? Is it?
Okay. Um, I think it was, it was the um, the opening of the concession stand and um, the. Uh, the Laura's World Fund and all of the groups that were there said it would be really helpful to have tables for people to sit at. Um, when they got their sacks.
Is there a better way to word that?
Um.
She could say councilor Murphy shared a recent uh, football game and mentioned that if there are Eagles, pick out field staff, just like mention.
Yeah.
Yeah, and mention that if there are.
I think that works if you just take out the field staff and you just go football game and mention that if there are any Eagles else, we could be a product day. Um, adding so picnic tables.
So that way Nancy is mentioning.
Well, I think it was.
You're saying that people there mentioned it, right?
The Gen D.
So you could say it's staff.
Staff.
Just staff instead of field staff?
Yeah. And staff mentioned. Volunteers mentioned, actually, it's volunteers.
Yeah, they're all volunteers.
It's volunteers at the concession stand, it's volunteers.
Volunteers, that's good.
Or concession staff or, I mean.
The volunteers, it's volunteer, okay, there's no.
That's fine, I just caught my eye when I was trying to read it. That's all I have.
We go for now? All right, all those in favor of the uh September twenty second, you know, twenty twenty two meeting minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, Nancy Harrington abstained six zero one. Comments from the press, comments from the public, say none, comments from the council? Late enough.
We have nothing to say. Except, good night.
Beating on you.
Oh, I thought that was your comment. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.